Any comments or anything about the minutes from previous meetings?
I think we have to, I have two sets of minutes on the agenda. We have to approve one at a time.
Either or, sir. Approve the majority at one time.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of June 10th and the meeting from June 30th.
I'll second it.
Alright, motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of June 10th and 30th, is that?
Yes.
Judy?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Grant?
Aye.
Motion carried. Approval claims and payroll.
I'll bring it up because it's in here, the speed limit signs. What's the status on those?
We have them and they came in bark out, that's why I have them, so there. We will get them up.
They were here last month.
Which ones, both of them?
The stop speed limit signs.
Which ones preferred?
Gas at the front of the money?
Troy on his way back. He'll get a little short, so he passed you off at 210, which seems a lot of money, but it's not.
Any other questions on claims and payroll?
I'll make a motion to accept claims and payroll.
Is there a second? I'll second time.
Alright, motion made and seconded to approve the claims and payroll. Judy?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Grant?
Aye.
Motion carried. Reports, police report, Bruce, your study.
Quiet fourth of July?
It was actually quiet. Quite somewhat, but... They accepted the Saturday, Sunday shooting fireworks pretty decently, so... Not too many complaints there.
I imagine that it probably helped the sale of...
Not really.
Not really?
No.
No, oh well. If so much can spend on it, they'll do it earlier than they do it late.
Yeah, we're about average.
You started to put something on the fourth, right? You could buy after the fourth.
Right, yeah.
Which just really messed with my Saturday night.
Remember who voted for it? Blame yourself.
Well, I wanted to buy a newer.
Oh.
Radars are in working?
Yep.
Been put through the test yet?
Yes.
Good deal.
Couple times.
The reason I ask about the speed limit sign on third is they're coming back around again. They're picking up speeds as well, I had, but I think it's...
Well, we're going third, first, and ninth, right? On those?
On the 30 unlicensed vehicle... Incidences, were any of them ticketed?
No, not yet.
So what do you, do you give them a warning and give them so many dates?
Just the notice to get rid first, yep. Yep.
So if they haven't done it by when? The first?
No, actually it'd be before the first. Because some of these went out before the first of the month, some went out after the first. So... Some are already gone, so...
Anybody else have any questions for Bruce or comments or concerns while you're down?
Congratulations to Tyler.
Yep. Early Sunday morning. Now we'll see how his lifestyle changes.
I heard you bought a puppy too.
Yeah, yeah, the puppy came first. Yeah. But the puppy's already came body trained, so... He told the kid, "Don't."
There's nothing else, Bruce, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
And you can get back to the check with the P.
We're good.
Economic development report, Roger, I don't see, Roger, not here, so...
We talked about it in the meeting tonight, we figured that this would be a big one. We want you to...
And same with the manor, I guess.
Manor report is fairly simple, Julie asked, and she's not here, but asked, purposes you pack it. This was something that will help her with her licensure and as well as her making sure she's in compliance. This was a policy of emergency power. Thing was put in your packet discussing what will, what can be done, and where the city falls into... To the whole scheme of things. It really isn't much different, it's just trying to, she's trying to cover herself and we, this is probably what we told her when we...
What's, it doesn't put us on any kind of time frame. I mean, it kind of hangs us out there with the, kind of, a little bit of responsibility, what's it doing to... I mean, we're allowed to run it under emergency reasons, which this would fall under. It doesn't affect us anything else with the...
Only concern I would have is the determination of the emergency is not always universal. So what may be deemed emergency here, meaning power or the people we get power from, there's a little difference. You can't just flip the switch because you feel like you can flip the switch.
This might actually give us a little more power toward an emergency?
Yes, it would.
Have you looked at this, Bruce?
I just given through it, I had not heard any discussion of what its purpose is. And she thought she had to buy a generator, now she doesn't have to buy a generator?
No, last month she brought to the council, they were able to wiggle their way for a little while. This is only a, this is a timing issue. I truly believe eventually Bob, whether or not, he wants to or not, that she's going to be forced to go that direction, which then comes back to the city to get a new generator. They're allowing her to set this policy in place to let her continue as is, if she can put this in, that's it.
I thought I suggested something like that at that last meeting and everybody said, "No, that's not possible, we've already checked."
No, I think she was, I think she said that, she had already made, she made the comment that we were out, because last month we, I had taken some generator bids for her, but as of that day of the meeting, I think that she had spoken to someone within that licensing and whatever and said that they were maybe able to extend the time.
Is our generator plant worth now? Several million dollars, isn't it?
If you were to look at the, I mean, Dash Johnson...
I just don't understand why we would want to go, another generator for a facility that's only basically, what is it, three blocks away? Four blocks away, and we've got a $5 million power plant sitting there. Why that can't provide the energy for the, for, I don't know why it couldn't do it for the hospital, but apparently that was before my time. But it certainly ought to be able to do it for the manor. So anyway, you know, it's kind of a moot point at this time, but I, I just, I just don't agree with this idea of the manor having to go out and buy it, spend a million dollars on a generator for themselves when you got a $5 million power plant three blocks away. This doesn't make any sense. But, of course, this...
The thing this does say other than we'll fire up, we'll try, and we'll get the power if we can, is it says quite specifically, "With the help of the city, a portable generator will be brought to the facility." We got one of those?
Yes.
That they can use, dedicated?
We've actually taken one up there, we can dedicate it, it's a, it's...
The portable we have is for the lagoon, isn't it?
We have another one, but it's a step above, it's not much more than a...
So you have a couple portables?
Yes, we have a step above a farm portable, you know, I mean, I'm not going to call it the greatest thing ever, but if they need to get 110 or something like that, we have that.
Well, as long as you have at least two. If they can't flush their toilets, even the manor might think it important to run the one on the, on the highway bypass.
The left pump?
I would certainly think that Kurt Hart and himself and his council and you would agree. Our legislation's a little bit more complex in the...
And you said you've taken a portable up there before, so they have the capability to plug it in? I mean, if that's the way it comes down, I mean...
It is all very temporary, it's like an oxygen machine, it's like very, you cannot do a whole lot, so they still have to put the disaster plan in place and move residents to the hospital. I gave her our last lead-up, which is our emergency operation manual, and she went through that to understand more about what the city's responsibility is in times of emergency, where she fits in, the whole thing, so... This is what she came up with and I went through it and I didn't see anything that was... Other than what we're doing already.
Because I know you're specifically referenced in here with the phone number, here, as your title, and then it mentions city and plane you employ, so... May I, however long we go, promise that they'll be available to do that in an emergency?
That's that, five ways, seven ways, everything dials 4928, and like I'm wood, it's been very good, it's worked very well. On-call people are locatable very quickly.
So there's basically nothing to deal with on that for now?
No, I don't think so, other than the fact that she brought this back and...
Probably a motion to authorize signature, you're taking on some responsibilities relative to the manor.
I'm thinking, if you've looked it over, do you think it's ready, I guess, as an attorney, as a city attorney, to sign it?
I don't think anything to matter with it, if not, we've got a generator we can do that with. I mean, basically all she says in two pages is, "We'll do the best we can and the city will take good care of us," which is what we kind of asked them to say two months ago.
Well, it's got his number and not mine.
Well, weren't there's like a liability with something like this fall, or...
Well, the city's obligated to do what they're doing here, but if I got it, it's a city facility anyway.
That's the key point.
So you don't really have any issue there, you couldn't take on these type of duties for a private facility.
No. Good question, but yeah, if it wanted to be a city facility, this would be a different discussion, or not at all.
I'll make a motion to authorize a signature for that agreement.
I'll second it.
Alright, motion made and seconded to authorize signatures for that. Judy?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Grant?
Aye.
Passed. Discussion action on library bond to be put on November ballot.
We have several things and we'll let the Bruce and Bruce kind of go at it. Bruce, you would introduce yourself, this is our emeritus representative. You have a, the library board is behind you, if you haven't seen that, and of course, the council's here, so...
I guess for the record, Bruce Lefler, emeritus of S. McCorkle Omaha. Up here in John Tresecstead and I'm here for, I guess, any questions that the council or library board or city attorney or anybody might have as far as the call of the election and the wording of the resolution and ordinances that are, ordinances in place as far as getting it set for a ballot, would be put on the November ballot. I guess I'll just jump on one thing that Mike had mentioned to me in a phone call earlier today. There seemed to be a, whether it's a typographical error in that first paragraph on that petition that had the 20 and the perenns 20, but didn't have the years following it. We surely didn't see that, talked to a priest who lived on council, didn't see that as being a fatal flaw in any stretch of imagination on the, on the petition from that standpoint.
As long as, as long as you guys are fine with it, I, you know, we clearly have the language that says the city's going to set the terms of bonds.
Right.
If you do this at all, you do that. There had been some other conversation, and I know people reading it will have concern over the statement about will levy tax. Maybe you could explain the aspects of that.
The, quite frankly, the logic or the wording behind that is that on a voted bond, bond election, the vote, the vote by the public allows the city to pledge its ad liborum taxing authority behind the bond, which is actually the best security that the city can have for a outstanding bond issue, meaning that if necessary, you shall use, you can use tax funds. You may use tax funds in order to pay that debt service. Doesn't say that you have to, it doesn't say that you shall, but it ultimately allows the city to use whatever funds necessary, or it chooses to use to pay the debt service on those bonds. But to the investor, what it means is the investor doesn't have to look at the sales tax collections that are coming in or any other fund collections that are coming in in order to see what is the security behind the bond that I'm investing in. I can look to the city's ad liborum taxing authority and know that should these other funds not be available, that the city would then levy a tax necessary to make sure as an investor I get paid. And from that standpoint, what it allows the city to do is probably borrow, borrow as an interest rate that's the lowest interest rate you have available to you.
Is a revenue bond still an option this day or not really?
Well, I mean, we do it, we do it quite often, you tend not to do it if you don't, if you have a choice to do it a different way. It doesn't mean, again, it doesn't mean you can't use revenues. There are certain bond issues, whether it's for utility bonds, we do see it on some independent nursing home type bonds, where revenues are the only way to go. But when you have the option of having at least backstopped, if you want to call it that, by taxes, it certainly allows for a lower borrowing cost.
What do you think the difference might be between a real straight revenue bond, sales tax only, and this? This is obviously out of thin air, but...
Yeah, no, I understand, you're probably, in reality, you're probably looking at 20 basis points to a quarter percent, 25, 20, 20 to 25 basis points. So a quarter of a percent difference in interest rate. And, you know, some of the language, I think, I don't think that the ballot language, I have to defer to John for a little bit on this because of the statute. It's kind of an odd statute, I think, that's being used in this particular situation. There certainly are situations where you could, within a bond election state, that we will use sales tax revenue. And then you've got sales tax revenue bonds from that standpoint.
Right, and that's, you know, that's already been made clear here to the library board, the city, the council intends that. I think the point of the discussion from my standpoint is, the library, in the course of explaining this, needs to make darn sure the voters know, it's, "Shall the city cause to be levied a tax?" If you don't read the rest of it, the answer is yes or no. Nobody's going to like that very good. But it's, "Shall the city cause to be leveled a tax in an amount sufficient to pay?" Well, to the extent the sales tax pays it, which has already been dedicated, then there is no amount sufficient to pay.
Yes, sir.
The city doesn't need to levy any tax at all. And that point's going to have to be made rather loudly, or you'll have some voters up in arms that, "No, we already passed one tax, we don't want to pass another one."
And if I can add, Bruce, too, that at our last meeting, it was obvious we were going to set a script of how we were going to inform people about this bond issue, so that we are all on the same page, so we do not have, we hope, those...
But they also have to be educated that if the sales tax falls short, there will be a tax.
Correct, correct, yeah.
Yeah, and that's the distinction from the city's standpoint. If the sales tax is successful and covered, it will let everybody's help.
And if I, if I kind of go backwards in some of the documentation that I've had from John, the city has certainly looked at that from the standpoint that they're not using the last sales tax dollar to help pay debt, there's obviously a cushion involved with that as well, from your standpoint. So the assurance from the city is the funds will be there to do that on a sales tax basis. We see, I would just say one thing, we see this quite often on, on a lot of city-owned facilities where when you're voting, as long as you're going to the voters for the, for the approval to do that, to take the, you know, to get the best security that you can, which is the backup essentially from the property tax allows you for the lower interest rate. And it does become an educational process for the, for the people behind it to say, you know, the city has pledged a sales tax revenue, the sales tax revenue is historically are sufficient to make payment on those things, so we don't ever anticipate that we're going to tap that debt property tax.
Just FYI, if you look at your treasures report, one of the things the city, a long time ago, took upon themselves to make sure that things were able to pay the bills as you go along, we also have a certificate of deposit for bond reserve that is there to pay off any lacking of any bond, whether it be on the lagoon or whether it be on any type of bond for the future. And it's right now at 76,000, and you know, continues to grow, so that's not there as your nest egg, but that's there as, you know, your possible cushion regardless.
So your resolution to act on is the resolution to recognize that this petition has been out there. Has there been any charging of the petition?
Petitions here, the way this, but I can read Bruce, and you probably read the same thing a hundred times, but under state law, tonight we present the petition to the second class to the council, to you, and basically from the law itself, such petitions shall set forth the nature of the work, contemplated the amounts of the bonds, and that's what's written on there, at the top and at the bottom, the rate of interest, length of time that the bonds will run, which in no event shall be less than five years, no more than 20 years from the date thereof. The petitioners shall give the bond to be approved by the city council of cities of the second class or board of trustees of villages for the payment of the expenses of the election in the event that the proposition fails to receive the majority of the votes cast at such election and then continues to go on, so...
So you've got a couple blanks to fill in on this resolution. Not less than 50, I take it, is the threshold for the signature, you could fill that in on the official resolution.
And I was going to ask you that's...
Is it a lot more than 50?
There's 117.
Why don't you say not less than 75 then?
Sure, I'm sure that, right.
I was going to defer to you anyway, I'm out.
I mean, as long as you're sure that many can be verified without question. And then there's a blank for taxable valuation of the city. That may require a phone call, if you have not made that phone call to ask the assessor how much that is. Americans won't know, they didn't fill it in anyway.
Is that a, is that a, the valuation of the city normally comes out from the county?
Right.
For budget purposes in August, is that...
Well, I think what they're doing here is, um... Yeah, I guess reading it to the extent it says the city has it January 1 of 14 is whatever the taxable valuation was at the time, so it's your 2013, 14th, 13th valuation.
Just to prove the possible percentage against the possible valuation can do it, it'll do it 20 times over, but you gotta say that.
I hope the city's worth more than 500,000.
Yeah.
And then the rest of the thing has the content of the 500,000, the yes or no, four set bonds and tax. So you've got your word cut out for you towards explaining that, and the notice that comes out. So it's, it's all just one resolution, you just need to make a motion to pass a resolution, it's all in there.
Any further questions? Concerns? Do we have a motion then to approve the resolution?
503.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution for the voting and the vote on the library bond issue.
Any seconds?
I'll second.
Alright, motion made and seconded to approve resolution 503. Resolution 503, Judy?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Grant?
Aye.
Motion carried.
So we're off and running.
Well, Bruce, that was less, it was painless almost.
Oh, it's ours. Yes, okay, that's fine.
The other Bruce, question for you on the tomorrow, and take this language from the resolutions and have Kelly send that down to Shannon to put it on the ballot, is that, or is that...
Yeah, they'll probably want a certified copy of the resolution, perhaps, they'll want something official looking. And the content is right in there, the language and for against vote, and then there's a copy of the notice, just the way it has to be published. That written notice, is there instructions in your cover letter on how many times?
Yeah, I think so, I was just going to suggest this here. Call him, it was Joey, and she'll confirm those publications.
Still required once each week, not less than four before the election.
Right.
Talk to them about that.
Right, just want to make sure you get that set up, or something like that.
Cory, you said?
Joey, 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 I don't know.
Very smart.
Yes, no, she knows her stuff, there's no doubt about that. Of course, she's been doing it for 38 years, 30 years or something, you kind of learn over experience.
When, is that number five then, and we've got that, what we need to do with that so far?
I believe so, library, board, anything you need. Now you know where we start with work, so we'll have it in tomorrow to Shannon, and then she's expecting it, so it'll be on the November ballot.
Alright. Update on street paving process?
We have Mr. Mead here in front of you, you will notice, I talked to Bruce today. The contract didn't go out, the contract's fairly thick, and Bruce, attorney, has a contract and I have one. But what I did, Terry, is give each one of the council the scope of agreement. I think you and I might have even talked about that at one time, but they have at least the agreement part to explain the street paving process in this convoluted world, where do we go next, and hopefully you can guide us on the right path.
Well, like I, like I mentioned before, this is our standard agreement, I don't know how many of you have seen it before. I'm sure the city has dealt with it at some point with numerous past projects or whatever. But we, we'll focus on the, the scope of services, which is usually part of the agreement, and that's really the kind of the meat and potatoes of what we're doing, I guess. What we did is put together a proposed engineering agreement for the five paving districts that were created earlier in the year. Filter Avenue, 4th Street, 9th Street, and then there's two areas of West Street. This scope of services basically spells out the preliminary design phase, the final design phase, the bidding and negotiation phase, and construction phase, construction administration. And then it goes through the resident project representative, which is basically the onsite construction inspection, and then post-construction phases, which will be the, putting together the assessable costs and, you know, attending the assessment hearing, that, that type of thing. Thought going into specifics of each one of these, the preliminary design phase, everything from the preliminary design to... Preliminary design, final design, bidding and negotiation, construction administration, and then the post-construction is, is figured as a lump sum amount. And that's, what we have now is $93,575, that'd be a lump sum for those services. We separate out the RPR, which is the construction inspection, because some of that is somewhat dependent upon the contractor you have and how much time we spend out there and how much, how much the city wants us out there. We normally do construction inspection on a part-time basis, because normally for us to be out there full-time, it's, it's not really cost-effective for the city to do that. So we generally do construction inspection on a part-time basis and build that hourly. And so that's separated out, and that's an estimated cost of 25,000. And then there's another, another portion of inspection, it's called the SLIP inspection, which is your storm water pollution prevention plan inspection, and that's kind of, you're somewhat obligated by the state to do a storm water pollution prevention plan, I won't go into detail on that unless you have questions. But that's also built as an hour... I won't go into detail on that unless you have questions, but that's also billed as an hourly. Basically, the construction inspection is billed hourly and everything else is lump sum. I don't know if there are specific questions you have had. Have you, any of you reviewed the scope of services at all or?
They, we just, Bruce and I just talked about this today. They've just got the fee attachments to them and Bruce is probably the one that slipped over the most besides myself.
Okay.
The questions that come up, I know from helping the council in direction is, next step is the securing of any bids or where would you go?
Well, it, it, let's assume, let's assume you approved this today. Within a couple of weeks, we would start to survey. We'd go out and survey the project, the individual projects and begin our preliminary design phase. We're a ways away from any bidding, bidding of projects because we don't have, we don't have a set of plans. We don't have a set of specs, we don't have any of that at this point. So we would, first thing we would do is go out and survey it. And that'd take a couple of weeks or whatever. And then we'd begin our preliminary design. We put together a preliminary design based upon what we know the city needs in those particular areas. That would usually be reviewed by the city. Once we get to that, then we move on to final design, which of course would, you know, be the final design. The preliminary design phase usually will take, for this, for this, I think we figured in sixty to ninety days. So it would take two to three months to do the preliminary design, another month, the two months to do the final design. And then we'd be ready to, we'd have a set of plans.
Very clearly looking at building, if at all, next supper.
Right, we're not, we're not, we're not gonna be building anything this year. We, we're simply too late in the year to be really doing anything with that.
Does the council have a clear understanding of the cost of each of these prospective projects? I mean, we have in the one and six-year plan, some estimates on this stuff. You know, my only suggestion would be if you're gonna hire the engineers to go ahead and spend a hundred and twenty-some thousand dollars on the process, then you better be pretty sure that you intend to proceed.
Well, I think they are.
When property owners show up and say, you can't do this to me. I'm not paying fifteen thousand dollars for paving in front of my house. You people are jerks and you have to repeal that.
I guess that brings up the question of, so if we accept this, do we accept it as the total amount of the project?
No, it's not broken down per project is kind of the problem from that standpoint.
Previously, when you bid your paving districts, I think Steve Par had originally done, put together the number, the construction estimates for each one. And I have that here, I mean, I could probably give you a copy of it if you need it. But those opinions of cost will include engineering into them. So like, I believe the total for all five projects was somewhere around a hundred and four thousand dollars. So that hundred and twenty-one thousand, or whatever it is, I can't remember.
Yeah.
Hundred and twenty-one thousand is in that eight hundred and four, in theory, you know.
Total was eight hundred and four for the five projects?
Right.
And that includes the?
That, that's, of course, is, we don't, we haven't bid any projects, so we don't know what the contractor's gonna bid.
But that's rough.
But that's a, that's a.
I guess what I'm wondering about is if we go through the preliminary design, do all the designing, we probably go through the bid negotiation. But then should those prices come back and then we start catching flak from the homeowners?
Well, I can't answer that, but you've already created the districts to some, to some degree, your residents have already accepted this.
And they have, yeah.
So obviously, they can always come back and change their mind.
Right, and they still have that option yet.
My understanding at the meeting, when they kind of, some of them sort of reluctantly accepted it, was the idea that if it comes in at a high bid that they don't, they aren't comfortable with it, we'll probably throw the thing out.
Right, that's, I guess, that's, that's a city decision. But creating the paving districts, your residents have basically already approved it. So that would be.
They've already, they've already lost their ability to stop it, let's say.
Right, so.
They approved the same.
Yeah, that's, that's.
My question being is, have we approved the contract? It's for the lump sum of the hundred and twenty-one thousand, it's not.
Well.
If, if we were to stop altogether, would we get a lot of the residents?
We bill as we progress.
Okay.
So if halfway through this process, you decide you're not gonna do it, we'll bill up to what we've done. I mean, I don't, we're not gonna stick you with the hundred and twenty-five dollars.
We're not liable for.
And no, we're not gonna do that. I mean, we generally bill as we progress. We, once we complete the preliminary design phase, that we build, we build monthly, but we generally bill to what, wherever we're at.
Gotcha.
You know, we're, we're, we're the city's engineer, we've done numerous projects here. We're not gonna, if you stop halfway in, we're not gonna go.
Remember, I raised some serious question on the library contract, but that they added some language about you can terminate it anytime and pay us up to that. And maybe that's the general intent, I didn't push it on.
I don't, I, I, I'm not gonna say I know what, exactly what the language is in our contract, but I know, you know, we're not gonna, we do other work for the city. We're not gonna force you to pay money and then lose future work. I mean, that's not very smart of us though.
And I do know some of the conversation that happened about future of the residents coming back and Bruce is here instead of John. But John and Terry and I sat down and talked the last time with, you know, about the bonding of this. And this is where you're gonna go on the assessment and how much. This is where a lot of your decisions are made coming into it. As far as the paving districts, Terry is right, I mean, they passed and you are, you know, good to go, not to be stopped, I think is the way Bruce said it, you know. But what you do is certainly what Bruce was saying. If you're gonna go forward, you can, I mean, you can go forward right now regardless and it may cause a lot of, what the word, the constriction.
Well, there are some areas you cannot assess. That study hasn't been completed totally yet. I mean, there'll be some places you just can't assess. But if you assess everything you can and take out the intersections, I mean, it's strictly a pick a number out of the sky right now, but probably the city is in for somewhere between a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars out of pocket if you assess everything you can. Because the city has to stand on intersection.
Right.
And can assess agricultural property and whatever. I mean, there's some limits to spaces you can assess. So you gotta be prepared to bite that off at least. And then either assess the rest or bite that off too. And eight hundred thousand is quite a bit. Go to the library for that.
And to his point about being eight hundred thousand, you have five different paving districts. This proposal's for all five of them. We could go back and redo, you know. It, it, conglomerate would be more expensive that way, but.
Beyond that, the discussion, I mean, if you're just taking on a significant project or they are going to do a lot of work, you're gonna spend.
We'll have sixty thousand.
Forty thousand or sixty thousand getting these answers and getting to bid.
Yeah, we'll have sixty thousand, forty thousand.
If you're not pretty sure you're gonna give it a hard go, you don't wanna do that. That's the only point right now.
I think we wanna go ahead with it.
If we have to, I mean, that's why we're gonna talk about, we knew it was gonna cost us some money.
Yeah.
I mean, how do we sit financially? I mean, that's a question for you.
We're, we've, a long time ago, you know, you made this and we are okay. But I'm just saying, a long time ago, you made this decision. I would say I would support, I would like to see you go forward because this is what you've instructed me to do for the last two years. Now we're at this point of actually where the rubber hits the road and.
Okay, so we bond two hundred thousand or three hundred thousand of this amount to try to get the rest of it back?
Well, you bond it all.
I know, but.
Assess the rest of it.
Assessment's gonna take care of thirty percent of it.
Yeah, if I can. If, what typically will happen then, and again, John will go into more detail, I think for some interim financing ideas certainly. But when you get to the permanent financing project, it's maybe you get the sign off. You know, there's a fifty-day pay-in period for assessments. And so typically what you would do is wait for those assessments. Once payments come in, you lower the bond issue by any amount of money that's coming in at that point in time. The people that don't pay their full assessment within that fifty years, or fifty days, excuse me, has ten years typically to repay installments. And so you structure your bond issue in such a manner, paying forward that, you know, those assessments will come in and pay that portion of the debt and the city portion will be, you know, if that's over ten or fifteen years, you certainly have that option as well. So it's an coordinated effort on that.
And then occasionally too, you'll see a piece of property that, say, has a little chunky house on it, gets assessed for fifty thousand dollars paving and the owners just don't pay. And then your alternative is foreclose the assessments on that property and sell it for the fifteen thousand it's worth and eat the rest. So that happens too.
We've got a few of those town we're already working on titles for, I think, so I don't think that.
More than one.
Okay, wow.
Do you feel forward or?
Oh, we're moving on tonight is authorizing the signature of the engineering contracts to move ahead.
I mean, everybody's watched the video probably. I mean, we were kind of over a barrel, we didn't have a choice.
I mean, I ain't here to argue with nobody, but.
What is it you're thinking, Jim? I mean, offhand, I mean, obviously you're looking at, you're gonna have to pay the increase. I just, I'm trying to get the thought process for the guys. I mean, we obviously, if there's some continuation of anything, I mean.
What, what do you pay over Jackson at the same amount of business?
Thirty-four dollars a ton.
Thirty-four dollars a ton.
And then thirty-four.
When did that start?
June one.
We were paying what previous, what was our previous?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
How much?
Twenty-eight. And you know, I gotta tell you, Gil was always good to us. But in hindsight, instead of incrementally going up, you heard this whole thing, the old saying that if you don't go up on an incremental basis and keep going, this was a big hit at a big time. So, I mean, they, they went up, we haven't had an increase.
Do you guys know what your, did you get raised or not? Do you know that?
You're talking on our tonnage from the bill. But we haven't seen a contract or anything.
Well, Gil sent out a notice, you're paying them, aren't you?
Right.
You're paying them the thirty-four.
No, you're not.
Okay, talk to Mike about that, I don't know what he's paying them.
It went June first.
Why would you say they're not?
Went twenty-six bucks. I done them the homework. You didn't get raised. That's why I'm wondering why I'm getting raised.
I, I don't, actually, Jim, I'm not arguing because you and I have always been along that. I don't know where you're coming from on this one.
Well, I'll just show you. I've talked to Leonard Gil myself. And I have your last bill from June at twenty-six dollars a ton. Leonard personally gave it to me. I got that same one, but he didn't raise it. He didn't raise it.
You can go ahead and pass that around if you want. Regardless of what he's done, not done, or anything else, I'm telling you, this is what we received and this is what we're going on with.
But you just told me you got raised, Mike?
Right there, I'm showing you, I'm gonna show you. Now, what Leonard, and I like.
I just wanna know why I'm being the beaten post here.
I, I'm staying out of this one because, believe me, I have nothing to do with this one other than what I have to do.
Do you have the latest bills from Gil here? And does it show a rate per ton on it?
Yeah.
Why would he give Jim one rate and you a different one?
This isn't actually signed, but it says effective June first, two thousand fourteen. Price is solid, waste disposal.
Do you know, Jim, if that's the case, we've dodged a bullet, not you.
You what?
If that's the case, the city's dodged a bullet, not you. What I'm asking is Leonard, and by the looks of this, has not raised it. This is what I received from Leonard specifically. Has he told you?
He sent them out to everybody.
What's he doing then? I mean, what is in your mind when you talk to Leonard? What is his intention?
He hasn't raised.
He hasn't raised rates on us for years.
He won't raise rates either. I mean, he hasn't done it. And that's, he hasn't done it for years and he can't go back far enough to when he raised it the last time.
I know.
That's what he's sending out if you wanna see.
Yeah, I got that.
That showed an envelope or a fax or what that, how'd that come?
This one came to us in, from, unless you probably received it.
It came from Alvin Gill.
A piece of.
And you're, didn't you say earlier we were paying, you were paying twenty-eight a ton?
I was twenty-six and I apologize, that's probably said right on there.
It was twenty-six, for sure.
Twenty-six to thirty-four.
I thought you said you was paying thirty-four.
It is, it says right on there.
It says on this notice, it's gonna be thirty-four, that's what it said.
Effective June one, and this is what we've been acting on.
So, did you say, Jim, did you get all these notices also? But.
No.
Can we see what you got there?
He never pays Gil credit.
Can we see what you saw there?
But obviously, you talked to.
No, I never, I, I, Leonard Gil himself gave me these, this here.
And those are just the invoices, basically, is what they are.
Can we see that?
There's that one there and that one there.
It was, it actually bill, and we've dodged a bullet, not anything else right now. And he still is at twenty-six.
Okay, so he did say he was raising it.
He sent that out to all his customers, he said.
So he's not gonna raise, I'm gonna follow up.
Yeah, we need to find out what his intentions are because if it's, if it happens next month, we're gonna be in the same boat, but.
What's the time period the bill that you just paid is for?
June, it's for June. So he still has not made his rates effective?
Yes, he has.
We need to talk.
He told me he has not raised Plainview for how long? He can't remember when the last time he raised it.
And I have to agree with that. That's what we've always been going with, going with that. My question to you, Jim, like I said, I've talked to Leonard too several times. I haven't talked to him, obviously, in the last month, but what's his intentions?
You know, I, I don't know what his intentions is, but he told me, he says he hasn't raised it. He don't plan on it, so.
Honestly, that's not Jim's responsibility.
Yeah.
No, but I, okay, I mean.
We need to, we need to talk to him ourselves, find out what his plans are. This is gonna go into effect ever? If it just happened to be he sends it to everybody, that notice to everybody in his rollups?
How do we do that?
I know, but look how professional it looks, it's on a piece of printer paper. I mean, don't let her head know nothing.
No, it just came in a bill.
Yeah, it came with the bill.
But I mean, I think we need to talk and find out what his intentions are.
I mean, if we are not gonna get raised, I don't think we will, if we don't get raised, we aren't gonna raise a tipping fee.
Then what I would do then, probably from our standpoint, is I don't think we're out of the woods yet, but I think that we at least tabled it.
We have to.
Yeah.
Well, I can see the writing on the wall. If we can't go the way we are and we have a contract, I can see six months into the contract, the tipping fees go up, here we go again. If we can't run just the way we are, can't we?
Well, I think you're hearing from the council that that's what they're saying, they feel they agreed to.
Yeah, I don't, I can't see raising, if we're not gonna have our rates and stuff raised without us knowing anything, I'm not gonna raise yours or our customers, the citizens of town. I mean, that's the other side of what we're looking at, was raising rates for pickup.
But yes, if we get raised by Gil from twenty-six to thirty-four, we're gonna have to make that difference up. We don't have that money budgeted, we don't have that money available. So we're gonna have to collect it from tipping fees and residential rates. We can't tell you the next twenty-four months.
What happens to me? Let's get that out on the table.
Well, I think that's the question I'm asking you, what is it that you feel?
I mean, I gotta go through the motion, I pick it up. If I get raised, for example, this was eight, or if the tipping fees go eight percent up, why am I not, I am entitled to an eight percent raise.
Does everyone understand why the hall are paying tipping fees? Let me explain that to you for a second because I don't think I've ever heard it discussed while any of you have been sitting here. The simplest thing is the city, if they're gonna run a transfer station, just runs the transfer station and they pay the pickup people, the flat rate for pickup. And then they haul it all away. Why go through this foolishness?
Perfect.
The city can run that. And that was the plan years ago. And Besmer came in one time and said, I can't stand this because they're charging me tipping fees or rather, I can't separate my city, my country garbage from my city garbage. I don't wanna separate my country garbage from my city garbage. So if I go out and make a loop out in the country and pick up the east side of Plainview and go dump, I'm dumping some country garbage. So the city said, well, you can't dump country garbage without paying tipping fee. And Besmer said, well, I can't separate it. So we settled on a plan, the current plan, that says you get paid this much and for that you absorb the tipping fee and you pay it on everything since the dump truck folks don't wanna make a separate drop to get rid of their commercial garbage. Because there's commercial garbage in town that they don't flat rate. And there's the country pickups that they don't flat rate. And if they don't wanna separate that, the city can't just furnish free hauling to Jackson for everything because it's not built in anywhere. That's where this kooky system came from. But it was to compensate for getting paid a flat rate always on the residential and the commercial and. and the commercial and country is on your own, charge whatever you want, but pay the tipping fee. So, they do, they do get caught in the middle on this tipping fee business sometimes. And they can absorb it on the country pickups. They can raise their rates. They can absorb it on the commercial pickups. They can raise their rates. But the contract has always said, take your chances for the period of the contract on tipping fees on residential. Build, build it into your bid. Jim doesn't like that. That, that's what it's always said. And every time the question comes up on tipping fees, it cuts into profits if they get raised. So, he doesn't like that, of course. But that's why the contract says what it says. And if it gets too far out of hand, well, of course, it would be, may, would make it into a losing proposition. But the protection that they've had always is it's a commercial grade. Plainview can't charge eighty dollars a ton because everybody goes somewhere else. And so, you're protected by the market, but that's the only place you're protected. You wanna change the contract and say it's cost plus, you know, the tipping fees are included, or you always get a raise, then by God, we better bid it that way. Because that's the way all the bidders have had to deal with it in the past is you're bidding for a set term and you're taking your chances on the residential tonnage for tipping fees. Now, you can tell him you're gonna raise it if you raise it anyway. Tonight, you're just gonna table it. You're not gonna do anything, obviously. Because we got fact problems and I don't know the answer to the fact problem. You certainly have no reason to raise the residential rates or worry about the tipping fees if you haven't suffered a raise. So, you need to find out what the facts are anyway. But that tells you why we are where we are. That's where all this stuff came from.
Well, yeah, I agree. I guess it's about as money for me. I, I don't understand why we can't just do a straight tonnage. Like, you know, if anybody's dumping out.
We can, but if you're gonna furnish the tip fees.
What?
For all the residential pickups, then you would expect the bid to be lower. Because they don't need to take in that much money. The tipping and hauling to Jackson is being furnished, right? Or it's not being furnished. They're paying for it. They didn't have to pay for that. If they got free dumping for all the residential, well, then the rate for residential could be much lower.
Well, that's, I guess my thought is if we're paying, say, thirty-four, twenty-six, whatever it is now, for the tonnage at Gil's, why can't we just charge X amount for tonnage? You guys are weighing when you come out there anyway, right?
Well, that's what they're doing, but you're charging enough profit to cover the semi and the driver and everybody that's going to Jackson. If we didn't have that, they'd have to drive the garbage truck to Jackson. And you can, you know, it can be structured either way.
I guess my thought, can we just, can we structure our, our tonnage accordingly and not so much? And maybe I'm looking at this tipping fee separately. I mean, is, is tipping fee actually?
It is.
It is straight tonnage.
That's just straight tonnage for the privilege that they have to get rid of the garbage a half mile from Plainview instead of driving it to Jackson. And Key pays the same and everybody that comes here pays the same, whoever comes here. And from here, the city gets that and has a little margin and hauls it all to Jackson. Do we know how many tons there are of the residential pickup?
Yeah, we've got it all broken down. I do not have.
I mean, you can know how much extra a month you're talking about for residential tonnage. And that number is built into their gross right now and then they're paying it back out in tipping fees. It's just money from one hand.
One hand is washing the other and is all it's doing.
I know, I know from looking at it and fully prepared for tonight, uh, obviously, we don't see the increase, so it's a real issue. But on the other hand, if this increase goes in, I know the direct effect on Jim, based upon the tonnage he had last year, it was right around six thousand a year. He gets hit with about six thousand. Remember, we were hit by going from twenty-six to thirty-four.
You mean it'd be a six thousand dollar raise?
It'd be a six dollar, um, he would have to pay six thousand more.
Six thousand raise on the tip for the residential garbage.
Yeah, for everything he dumps out there.
Where'd you come up with six dollars?
For everything.
I used, uh, the figures you had and then basically took it. What would it be at fifty-one versus now you'd have to pay fifty-eight? So, I've got the, all the, for, from a year period, year and a half, um, that did that.
Okay, but that's not just residential. That's residential and commercial. And that goes to the problem.
So, that would, that would generate six thousand dollars for the city that I would come out of my budget, right?
That's.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe half of it you'd build with the commercial and country customers, but half of it you'd have to eat. I don't know what the proportion to ten.
It wouldn't be, you know, half.
I have no idea.
It's not. I mean, I mean, we did the figure and Jim's, the, the, the country is, and this is quite a bit less. There's no doubt about that. Um, but remember, we're talking what the effect if Gil, if Leonard, who's always been good to his work, I have no doubt about that. Leonard's always been good to Plainview. But if he does go to thirty-four, the effect on us, Jim, which you weren't here at the meeting, is about forty grand.
Yeah, I don't know.
But I understand where the effect that comes back on you. And I just, the real numbers I came up with and said, okay, what is fair? And, and that's, I gotta go back to the council.
How come we didn't just look at the bill when it came and recognize that it was not thirty-four?
I don't see the bills.
I, yeah, I never, I didn't.
Bruce, that's just, you know, something they go through the billing and the claims. I don't see the bill from LP Gil that goes straight out, so. And I wouldn't expect the transition for either Kelly or even Melissa to catch twenty-six.
Well, and we, I think we raised the rate during the June tenth meeting and now it's prior to the bill.
Well, essentially, you gave me instructions to bring the documents to raise the rate.
We never actually raised it.
Well, that was my first meeting, so I didn't.
It said in the meeting, it said in the minutes last month, made a motion to, to raise, but that doesn't do it. I mean, that really disconstituted instructions to me. We have a resolution. We have an ordinance sitting here tonight. If you table those, you still haven't raised the rates. Uh, we've just talked about it.
The bottom line is, Corey, the bottom line, what I said with, with Grant, is the city dodged a bullet. The city has dodged a bullet. Everyone else is on status quo. Jim's still paying fifty-one. We're still paying twenty-six. Everything's been going as normal. The time, I don't know, and I'll be calling Leonard tomorrow or having Tim call to find out exactly if, if he is saying that it's never gonna happen.
Don't, don't say, I don't.
I'm not, Jim, I'm not.
Never is a big word.
You heard that in December.
Yeah.
I mean, these, based upon what we had in front of us, budget wise, we've had fifty-one for the last, since I've been administrator, okay? That's, that's six years. We've been at fifty-one. We based what we talked about in December on the existing contract that was expiring in December. So, I don't know what that is doing and this has totally put me into bafflement because all I have to go is what's given to me as administrator, that their rates are going.
I, I honestly look at as another side of this is we're, to protect Jim and to protect the city, we're both sitting here working without a contract yet.
I mean, I think, and we need to, it's clear to me, we table this resolution for tonight, I think. And we'll probably have to make a motion and view that.
But I mean, the next, the next step is, I mean, once we get this all figured out, because I don't think anybody can sign a contract right now.
I think we need a different contract, different, uh, just, you know.
Well, it's a simple matter for city to furnish pre-tip and hauling to Jackson if we wanna redo the math, but then you gotta separate the loads.
No, I.
And that's a big pain. That's what Besmer came in here four, fifteen years ago and said, I don't wanna separate the loads. I want it all to be city pickup go down what I feel like.
The tipping fee, if worst case scenario, if the country was picked up separately, I mean, that, that could be weighed separately and it is weighed separately.
Well, good. If you separate the loads, it's a piece of cake. Then the city can furnish the hauling for the city garbage, but that would change the rate and the gross a little. And you can do it either way. It doesn't matter.
Does the city wanna do their own garbage hauling?
We talked about it, but right now, we're not prepared for anything, Jim.
I don't see it being a benefit for us at this point. I really don't. I see it being more of a liability.
Okay. I didn't know if there was a reason for this, if you wanted to take it on yourself, or I didn't, I didn't know.
No, the whole story was just the understanding of this huge rate.
I'm standing from Leonard.
And I still stand by my word. I mean, we sat here in that meeting.
Okay.
I mean, I'm the only one. I mean, I can't figure everybody, but I watched the video today just for that reason to see how that all went down.
I watched it four or five times.
We watched a little of it, but.
Round popcorn.
But I had the contract and that's why I said, I don't care what the video says. The contract is still the contract.
But the, what contract you have expired.
But there isn't any, there wasn't any reprinted contract. So, I guess right now, you're just applying blind.
We've just run on what we said that night and now I'm, I'm fine with, I was fine with it, uh, until this came up, okay?
Because I, I think what.
I.
What Jim was probably saying was that if they do, if LP Gil raises the rates from twenty-six to thirty-four, eight dollars, and we raise the tipping fee seven, he's gonna have to raise his rate is what he's saying. And I think what Bruce is gonna tell us is that if we negotiate a new rate, we're gonna have to go out for bids and say, is that?
I mean, that's fair.
Am I, am I right there, Bruce? I don't think you're gonna say.
He can only absorb or pass on the tip fees on commercial and farm.
You're not gonna say.
Because he sets those rates.
Hmm.
But the tip fees on residential are mandatory. You gotta dump city garbage at the city transfer station right now. Yeah, so, yeah, I, I'm sure, you know, he'd like to change that. And you could write a contract that says if there's a percentage change in the tip fee, uh, your total contract amount goes up by that amount, if you wanna do that. If you do that, but that'd have to be a rebid. Right now, you're just working oral agreement, roll over the old contract, stagger along.
What's the rebid, uh, process in that? Because as the status quo of fifty-one, everything's fine as you're doing it. Where are we looking at? Thirty days, sixty days?
Well, you kinda promised him two years when this conversation happened.
That's status quo.
And that was a year and a half ago. Or I'm sorry, that was six months. It was a year and a half left. So, you're really just coasting. If Gil doesn't change, the question hasn't come up.
Which, keep our fingers crossed. We should move forward with it.
You wanna just coast out the two years if you can?
Hell, yes.
I mean, I'm fine with it.
I mean, I.
I mean, your only decision to make tonight.
Our two, our two years is a, there's nothing even writing once again on that.
Well, you can put stuff back in the agenda for next month. All you could do tonight is either pass these or table them. Move on.
If, if, say, six months down the road, halfway through your contract right now, they do raise it to thirty-four, we choose to raise our tipping fee to whatever we were gonna do it. Is there a way to exclude Jim or to make Jim's amount separate, different? Is that?
Good. Well, if you're gonna reoffer a new contract for the garbage, I guess I had just argued in the past, you should rebid it. And I'm supposed to just write private contracts with whoever you're supposed to bid on, but you're hosting right now. But you could give, if you, if you see this come up and it's real, you could tell Jim, hey, in ninety days, we're gonna have to redo this. How about we rebid? I mean, he'd rather rebid than get, than have somebody tell him he's gotta sit with a losing contract for a year, I suppose.
Is that true, Jim?
I just assumed, leave it just the way it is.
Yeah.
I'm willing to work for, you know, like we talked before. If nobody got hurt out of the deal, what's, why, uh, if it ain't costing the city no more, why should it cost me more?
Okay, but what if it does start costing?
Well, then, whatever the percentage goes up, I should receive the same amount, correct? If it go, like this one here, it went up eight percent, shouldn't I go, get it go up eight percent?
No, because what you're doing is not tipping. You're collecting.
Well, the only problem with that, Jim, I think it's a fair concept, but the problem is when it was bid, that wasn't the terms everybody bid on. I mean, everybody was told you gotta bid your pay for the term of the contract. And when that was done, it was five years.
And it was five years and it never went up.
As it happened, it never went up during that time. So, we never had to fight.
And I ain't here to fight. I'm just here to get the facts. Why, why in your mind, if you was working, doing it, and the city raised you eight percent and you're set at a salary of X amount of dollars?
They pay me a fixed amount every month and dump more crap on me every day.
Yes.
I don't see any difference in that. No. To, to be more serious, if I had bid a deal for five years and I said, I'll do it for that, no matter what, I don't care how much work there is, then by God, that's what I'd do. And that's what the contract said. But that contract expired. I told everybody the contract could only roll over on the same terms. Everybody voted and said, let's roll it over, but we don't have a paper one. So, you're just floating. I guess, I think you just float. But sometime in the next year and a half, this is gonna come to a question.
Yeah.
Either Gil is gonna go up or this is gonna run out. Maybe a new contract should say, you get this percentage raised to cover the tip fee. You could say that.
Or eliminate it.
Or eliminate them if you can figure out some way to absorb it. But the, the, the business of the outside Plainview trash.
What do you mean, absorb them?
For the city to absorb the residential hauling. I mean, the city could absorb the residential hauling, but the city can't absorb the commercial hauling and they can't absorb the farms and they can't absorb Key. I mean, anybody that's bringing in separate trash, it's not Plainview billed, has gotta pay somehow to get the stuff to Jackson.
Yeah, I can see with them other guys, but for pure trash.
True. If it's.
One hand is washing the other.
If it's Plainview's trash, Plainview can handle it. Plainview has never set rates for commercial. Plainview has never collected the commercial. That's been left to them. And if they, and if, and if the haulers feel like they gotta raise their commercial seven percent because the tip fee went up, they can do that. The only place we got the problem is the fixed pay for the residential against the tip fee. And you could put that in the contract, but that goes up. But everybody that bids should get to know that.
That's the problem. You never know when the tipping fees are gonna go up.
That's true.
And that's what's crazy about the tipping fees. It only benefits the city.
Probably in the future, you should bid it next time. You should bid it with that reason there because this discussion needs to quit happening.
Do we have to do a five-year contract or can be on a, can be on a two-year contract? Because, I mean, as, as tonnage costs and, you know, fees go up and down, it's probably not gonna fluctuate that much over a two or three-year period, but over five years.
One of the arguments though on that was, including if you remember Jim, the, um, individual who was just starting up a business that put a bid in, is that they wanted a five-year security.
That was buy equipment.
Because of cool stuff. You don't have to. You do what you want, but that was the reasoning that they went.
And that, it stands to reason. I mean.
Yeah, they're investing some money in it.
Yeah.
Well, at this point, I think we probably make a motion to table this. We'll discuss it until next month. Get some hard evidence.
Second? Uh, yeah, motion made second to continue. This, you're tabled. Uh, Judy?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Grant?
Aye.
Okay.
We'll be back again next week.
I hope we don't, I hope we don't seem pretty in half.
Hey, Jim, will you do me a favor? Are you over in Sioux City right now?
No.
Can you give me a call tomorrow on a, a different issue?
On what that?
Can you call, give me a call on a different issue tomorrow?
Yeah. Yeah, we definitely need to know what Gil is actually gonna do.
Well, it's, my guess is he's sending it out. Obviously, it's gonna, he's got something planned. It's just, it's a full, their billing software hasn't been updated.
We ran, if anybody's curious, we ran three-year contracts back in the nineties and up to January of two thousand three. And then. I think that's when Jim took over.
And that was the, what I remember, I remember the discussion about long-term.
We had a clause in there at one point, if there was any change in tonnage for over twenty percent, it would all be renegotiated. And we could say, if there's any change in tip fees of over a certain amount, it could all be renegotiated. But as you heard him say three or four times, he thinks if there's any change in tip fees, you should guarantee him his profit and just absorb it. Yeah, we last did it in two thousand and three and then two thousand and nine. And that's the last copy I have, because then the city started typing them out. I haven't seen one since. Kelly will type.
Who's carrying garbage or picking up garbage years past?
What?
Who was picking garbage up in the nineties?
Besmer, 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 Besmer.
Okay, socialist.
And then Besmer said he was gonna quit. And then it was bid a couple times. And then Besmer came back in and said, nah, maybe I don't wanna quit, Jim will bid it. And Jim bid it. About the time that Besmer wondered if he started drawing social security, I think.
Oh.
Something like that. But that's a separate question.
Well, number eleven, approval of Judith Green as manager of American Legion number one forty-eight. Anybody have an idea what that is?
You, um, uh, it is, it's a.
What's that? New Jim.
What's that?
My eleven's not that one, but that's great. I never grabbed one off the chair, I shouldn't. It's okay.
And I guess just for.
We've done this in the past.
Yeah, and formality, I just wanna make sure it's clear, and I'll talk to Joe separately. Joe got some idea about forty-eight hour state statute and our code, both simultaneously. It's twenty-four hours, so if there's any question about having it on Monday or something like that, it's perfectly fine. I don't know where the forty-eight hours come from, but.
School uses forty-eight.
Probably. Maybe we're in some school district or some.
Our school district uses forty-eight.
Yeah, and A school district may have.
Um, you need to approve somebody as manager of American Legion?
Yep.
Why? Why is that?
You have to approve a liquor license.
Yeah, so we're approving the liquor license. We're not approving, they hired a manager and we're saying.
But I, well, the request is approve manager, I've hardly looked at it at all. But I think the city has to agree that that person can manage the liquor license.
Right.
The state has to receive a copy saying that you guys have approved for her to be the manager before they will issue the license. Do we have to do any background check to approve that? There's quite a bit of information here in there, hacking about the individual.
You can investigate whatever you want, you get the same disclosure that they turn in to the liquor commission, it's all in that.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve Judith Green to be the holder of the liquor license for the American Legion. The manager of whatever.
That's a question, I guess, before we go too far on that.
Okay.
So this is received by Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, so they've done their due diligence on this?
Right, they get it. They ask the city's opinion essentially. The liquor commission will still do as they please, but they ask the city to say, we agree or we don't agree. I'm not so sure the city actually has veto power, but the city gets to offer your opinion. You approve this or you don't approve that. That's, I, that is under, I, as I understand the procedure.
I don't know this person, does anybody know who?
I mean.
Only by letters.
I was, I was wondering.
She's written some letters to the area.
Okay, I've read some letters.
I've known her personally for eight months. She used to go to, she was going to come to our church for a while and I, I, her granddaughter came to our youth program. She worked, I don't know what it shows on her employment stuff, I mean, just what I know, she worked in a factory for a number of years and then moved up to retire. Very patriotic, movable person.
And she's volunteering, I know she's volunteering at the.
Does anybody know anybody who responds to those letters she?
She solemn agrees with Ken.
The application's not for Wilson, I said, as long as Wilson's not. She's a, she's, so to my understanding, she's a very reasonable, nice person that has a lot of responsibility. She's a very responsible person.
Would've been nice to have somebody from the Legion here then.
She drives a nice truck and takes care of time all day, all the time.
All second motion.
Alright, motion made and seconded to approve Judith Green as manager of American Legion. I don't know if that's really working right, say we're approving it, but, uh, anyway, that's what's up. Judy?
Aye.
Uh, Cory?
Aye.
Grant?
Aye.
Um, Keno application will be next.
We should have in the package and hopefully represented.
Somebody from the school?
I use.
Somebody from the school.
Patty said she knew the application, whether it came up or not, or that it was before, so.
Are you a social person?
Am I a social?
Social center person?
Yes, I am.
Well, there's three of them. They gotta call for them one at a time or do whatever you're gonna do.
You wanna speak, Bodler? You wanna come on up?
Yeah, absolutely.
We won't hold it against you.
Yeah.
Okay. What we're looking for in the, in the grant is that we're gonna replace the, uh, as the entrance comes into the social center, it's got rocks and, and some, and some shrubs, and we were gonna replace that with cement, because it, we just can't control the weeds and it seems to keep working up. And to make it look a little better for the public and town and stuff, we thought we could get that replaced and, and have a nicer looking entryway to the center. And we got two bids, I don't know if you got, the one was twenty-four hundred and something, the other was seventeen hundred, and we're taking the seventeen hundred dollar one and we're, would like, uh, you know, we're looking for a thousand dollar grant.
Well, I apologize, on the agenda it says seventeen forty, that should be a thousand.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
Are you going to, is it going to be a flat area there underneath there?
Yeah, yeah, it'll be, it'll be fat or flat, yep, because it, it's curved now around it, but it just was covered with rock way back, who knows when. And they had them shrubs and things put in there. And the shrubs have pretty well outlived their life and, uh, it's getting a little kinda ragged. And that's why we wanna kinda straighten it up so it looks kinda nice.
I'll make the motion and approve the thousand dollars for the social center.
Second? I'll second that. Another motion made, seconded to approve the thousand dollar Keno grant to the social center. Judy?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Grant?
Aye.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I already told you not to, I don't know what happened. They don't listen to me.
Now, the school, public school, there's nobody here for the school, huh?
I, yeah, I don't know, Patty was supposed to be here, I don't know. I don't know.
Well, I guess there was an application in the package, is anybody reading?
I guess, I don't.
I figured out they're replacing the basketball or football square.
Basketball.
All, all three of them.
In the gym.
All three of them.
The football field too?
Yes.
It's both?
All, all three. Both of the ones in the basketball court, in the gym, and then the one at the football field also.
So the two in the pirate gym, not been in the.
Yes, they're gonna move into the tart, move the pirate gym into the tart.
What if you.
I think so.
With the new floor. It's about community betterment. And because they use the gyms and everything, I couldn't quite understand where the football field came in.
It's on the.
It's on the quotes from Daktronic.
Yeah.
But it's not in any of the application.
Yeah.
That's what I missed.
She's only applying for part of, I mean, the total is twenty-five. The reason I know is I heard this discussion five times at the school, and it was, total is twenty-five for all the scoreboards in the backlit and everything else. She's just asking you to approve the backlit part.
Of the backboards, actually, isn't that?
Y- yeah, of the backboards.
So like when the clock runs out, they light up or something?
I think when you make a shot, it might.
Every time?
I don't know. Like a hockey game or something.
Can they have like the dollar lights, they have like the follow the basketball?
First last couple years, it's been pretty miraculous when we do score a basket, so.
No comment.
Our scoreboard only goes to nine.
Yeah, it's one digit.
Patty came in and we, we discussed this a little bit. Uh, I, you know, this Keno grant from the beginning, I remember the inception and everything when it came, a little difficulty with this. I understand from a viewpoint of the community club basketball tournament and some of the other youth activities and some of the things that are aside from the school, and they do use, uh, these, uh, but this is a, another taxing entity, this is.
It is. I, I looked at that because I thought it might be raised and, well, the, the statute says, community betterment, it also says payment of bills essentially that would reduce tax burden on the community.
Correct.
Well, I guess you could say that fits. One government entity to give grants to another government entity is kind of strange. But I think it fits the definition well enough if you want to do it.
I think Bruce is gonna.
I said, never mind. If you, if you go back and look through the amount of approved grants, I think the majority of the money has gone to government programs.
Well, city.
Yeah, it's all the same.
And I can, I really, that's the part I don't disagree. I mean, I, I really like to see these youth, and it is from youth, and it's very clearly set out and you support whatever you want. Did have some issues with them, uh, the school board comment about, um, why should we do this when a merger's coming about? But with that being said.
In all fairness, they did approve a new floor on Monday night, so the tartan gym's getting a new floor, it's just a nice one.
You know, you know, actually, I would've much rather seen them come after money for that floor, because it's used for community purposes. It's used for lots of community purposes.
The way I look at it is it's twenty-five thousand dollars we won't have to spend at the school.
It's a forty-nine thousand dollar floor and it's a two thousand dollar scoreboard request, so you might wanna take this one.
Oh, that we could take.
And it'll free up two thousand dollars worth of cash they could use to pay the consultant for the merger.
Right.
They come out with a four-bolts, they put them in a ban, they take them up.
And you looked at me?
Out of all fairness too, it's already been paid for. I mean, the school's agreed to just pay for it.
I see that, that they've already approved it.
We only have a six million dollar budget, I don't know where they came up with twenty-four thousand to do this project.
You, you, on the other, the other side of it, you certainly have twenty-two thousand in your Keno account to use as you see fit. And if this is a project worthwhile, then I think then you should.
Go for it. How many teachers have not showed up?
I believe the community club coughed up some money, if that makes a difference.
I was gonna ask, but I didn't know if it was material or not. They met last night?
How about ball backers?
About ball backers what?
Do they put money into this kinda thing?
They don't have any money.
They just ball and softball.
They ask you for money, I'm like, fine, they don't, they never have any.
In all fairness, the ball backers, they bought their own scoreboards.
Technically.
Technically.
By asking for money, but.
The health of Keno.
So many lines, it's hard to keep them all straight.
Can we go on to the next one?
Has, has the school looked at the, I don't know right now, there's no scoreboard sponsorships, is that?
They discussed, um, they actually had, they actually had a private donor asked to, they were gonna give half the money over t- three years or something like that, and they wanted advertising rights forever. And I threw a little bit of a stink about that. If they're gonna sell advertising on it, they should open it up, but then you gotta manage it, and you gotta change out the signs when you change them. And I made the case there too, you know, you have a six million dollar budget, you can't find twenty-five thousand, just buy a scoreboard, that's kind of a maintenance upkeepy thing, and they just did that. So they kinda turned down the sponsoring at the moment, so. I think Pepsi gets on there because they're gonna use some Pepsi money to buy it. They get Pepsi money from the, from having a Pepsi machine or something like that, so.
Think if they had a Bud Light machine?
Oh, does anybody care if you make a motion?
Cory, one thing you can do is, I mean, I should look at these, uh, these motions aren't set with a set number. You can offer a number that you wish you have to, or more if you have any idea. Judy's actually done that a couple times, said, let's give more.
We said there's only twenty-two, so we can't do the whole.
No, you can. Oh, you, no, no, not a big scoreboard.
Can I get in before you?
You can make a motion.
You wanna move on to the next?
I, I mean, we don't have to make a motion not to.
Yeah, we just have to.
Prove it to you.
Well, the next item is council comments, as far as I can see.
No, we have, we have the.
Keno.
Clown festival.
That's what Sherri's waiting for.
Deep breaths, deep, deep breaths.
Clown festival after that, okay.
Actually, Diane was supposed to be here and not me, so I'm not overly prepared, but if you have any questions, I can do the best I can. We've spent five thousand dollars for doing the, uh, weekend for clown days and, um, we spent four thousand dollars, we're asking for a thousand dollar Keno grant to help pay up the bills. So we've more than matched what we're asking for.
Now, precedence for this one, I'll just kinda update you a little bit. Certainly, everything about it's reasonable. The only thing that is contrary to a typical Keno grant, but yet they, they've done it before, so it's okay. I mean, they did it with the barbecue and a couple of other things. But you normally don't approve Keno grants to pay bills for an event that's already happened. So that's just a nominee, of course, but we did for the barbecue, I think.
And I'm, I'm not really sure, Mike, on this, because Diane would know this more. I go around and go out and do my thing, Diane, Diane does this part. What we actually need to do is get in earlier in the year so that we have it.
So how do the thousand dollars get covered? Is there still bills unpaid?
I think it carries over to the checking account.
Yeah.
This, this isn't covered?
This, yeah, I think they've covered everything. I have, I know Amy in the chamber basically controls the checkbook.
Yeah, Amy and Renee, I think, pretty much.
And I think, I'm not a hundred percent sure I stay out of it, to be honest with you, but I think, I'm pretty sure they've covered it. And basically, this is just to replenish the checking account for next year's expenditures for next year's festival.
And that's perfectly normal.
Why would? Do you, I, if we're gonna do this and after, after and after, to pay bills that they've already spent money for, I would like to see accounting. Why do they need it if they've already agreed, you know?
And typically, we have to go back, I, I will, if you would like that, they cannot receive a Keno grant unless there is an accounting, has to come back to the city.
Of what happened, why you couldn't cover what you were setting out to do. Likewise, if they want to apply now for a thousand dollars for next year, I would have no problem with that.
And I think that's, that's what I'm calling, while.
Well, it's not when they apply.
The wording in it is, it's basically talking about the expenses from this year and everything. But I think, I think it's actually, just after, because I asked Amy about it, because like I said, it's, the chamber controls the checkbook. And I think it was more of the fact that it's worded of what this year consisted of, but I think it's, actually goes toward that expenditure next year.
Could they re-enter?
I would say so, it'd make more sense to do that.
I would, I would love to have them.
And then, okay, just for my, yeah.
Twenty fifteen.
Okay, just for my, when does, when's the soonest you can apply?
When would you, I mean, basically, this is as soon as you just applied for next year. Uh, but since it's written like this, I would say you've got the December quarter, January one, or January.
So December, January, we could.
December, end of December, and the end of March.
Okay.
And you know, I mean, maybe even.
You can put it in anytime.
I'd rather see it less than this checking.
Well, you said, I guess you have to be into September too. Sorry, you gotta be into September, then a quarter.
Into September or December?
December, March, and then you, of course, this one was the end of June.
Okay, so September, December, or March?
And if I happen to be wrong, then it is covered.
If you would put it in now, tomorrow, for two twenty fifteen, he would just hold it until the September thing. You can do it anytime between now.
Okay.
And then, right?
Yeah, if it's already in, if you re-enter it, you're just big on the. If it's already in, if you re-enter it, it just goes on the menu, goes to the next cycle.
So just fill out the paperwork again then and give it to you and then I can go in in September, December?
But I, I guess I would just, I think Diane's gonna say the same thing. To be clear, if this is for next year, I guess my preference would be that as close to the festival as you can, so that the money stays in the city's checking account for a long period of time.
And I guess Mar, you know.
March might be cutting it close.
Yeah, March might be cutting it close.
Yeah, you started set up entertainment and some of that little stuff ahead of time, I think. I don't think September.
I, I wouldn't want to do any more, any later in December.
This probably isn't, I mean, we're probably splitting hairs, but this probably isn't the worst thing to approve now for next year with the condition you might want to just ask for it to not come back in September.
I would like this the end of it.
You would like.
Yeah, I would.
I would.
Follow over.
Okay, I understand.
Then it gets filed that way and looks like it's for next year.
So, I know.
I mean, I have no problem doing it for next year.
Yeah, and that's, it's just.
And they, they can show what they did this year and how much. Yeah.
And I understand that too, and like I said, I don't deal with this part of it, but Diane wasn't able to come here. So that's why I'm here. I'm the warm body that showed up, so. Okay, I will pass that on to them and then we'll just maybe shoot for probably the December one, I'm guessing. So, okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jerry.
Unless you.
Sure, I'm breaking back down, I'm just torn.
Now, council comments. I have no comments. Questions?
Yeah.
I haven't been up there for a while. Has the ball field improvements gotten, I saw poles up there at one point.
Incredible, I mean, right now it's moving along, unfortunately, the season's over, but I think we knew that when we finally got approved that the crossbars are on and they'll put up the ice over the lights, which probably they have to do the next thing, they'll go up on, as you know. And kind of, but they've got the new poles, they took down the old overhead wire, I think as of today, I think they'll take them down, the overhead wire.
There's one more men's game this Friday, so if they can be up by Friday, that'd be great.
Whoops. Whoops.
Put minors hats on, flashlights.
I didn't hear that. What did you say again? Can you move to the other field if possible? I don't know if it's gonna bring that down.
Yeah, no, I don't think that'll be a problem. Is it, did practice to leave the lights on to concession stand?
Those are, those are security lights. What you're saying is one of the requests by the ball backers was to, the, the security would be so dark, but they were having lots of break-ins. And there's no way to really light that effectively without some kind of a security light, so we opted to go with those underneath all the way around. It actually lights up very well. But yes, that is what they're there for.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is lights on up there every morning?
If you, if you go down at eleven o'clock at night, Jerry will meet you down there.
Oh, really?
He'll teach you right down there. Found that out.
He's not up at six in the morning. Council comments? That's it. City attorney comments?
Mike, you called this afternoon and asked about the Sims property.
Yeah.
And said we'd gotten in a bid. I told those people that they, and they finally called back and said they were serious, that they were out of time to get into this meeting.
That's what.
I mean, they needed to know that. We have people interested in the vacant lot north of the Catholic cemetery, if you will.
Second corner lot.
And that's one of these with the mortgage on that we still need to clean up, but these people just want it for a secondary lot. They were, they're talking about buying the house next door. And if they want it for a secondary lot, they could just buy it. If somebody's gonna put a hundred fifty thousand dollar house on the lot, so you didn't, we don't want to deal with this fake old mortgage that's really no good, then you want it off of there. But if they're just gonna use it for gardening or something, we can talk to them. So they've turned in a bid, now I explained this though. And they've turned in a bid to buy it and take their chances and take it quick like these. I told them to hold off. I've got a call out to the title insurance people at Pierce that maybe it's so old and so obviously no good, they would just insure over it. They would just give them clean title insurance anyway. They could, but I don't have that answer back. But I think that should remain pending. It's not valid for this meeting, but it's valid for the next meeting, or if you have a special meeting, it could go on the agenda. And you could look at their bid and if you're willing to deal with it, accept it.
And therefore.
If we don't have to fuss with the quiet title action and we don't have to fuss with all this other stuff, if you can take lessons, don't come out. And it'd be good.
Well, just a quick little background on, Judy, you probably know who it is. If you don't, it was a key cafer from here, actually Glenn's sister, I don't know, I can't think of her name, but they were in Pilgrim and they had their house destroyed. And they, she wants, they want to move back here to closer to her home and that's, they've been looking around, so I think in their search they've come up with that Pedak House. Is that what it's called?
Yeah. But they're interested in the house just east of the alley.
You're interested in moving back, give them a lot. Seriously.
I frankly suggested.
Who cares?
I talked to both the wife and the husband and I said, bid, but don't bid a lot, you know, if you're gonna come and buy a house, I bet you can get this done. And I don't know what their bid is, but we'll see.
I.
That was a chance.
Yeah.
To run them off, yeah.
Another real estate deal, the Montgomery Heisman is done and pending and on its way to Pierce, so. I noticed in the list of expenses, there's a reimbursement or payment for some expense you had during the month, went to a seminar or something.
Summer CMA conference.
Look in the tail end of the city administrator ordinance one two oh eight. It very clearly says, if you expect to be reimbursed, you should get those approved by the council in advance. At some point, somebody might come complaining and say none of those reimbursements were valid and you should pay them all back, which would be unpleasant.
Yeah, that, that title and that car, I'm. Return that car.
The highway sign issue, the flashing light, that thing is still pending. I mean, I suggested, there's this letter, you guys better pay attention and do something. Your letter, Mike, said somebody talked to the Nebraska Department of Roads. Sure didn't talk to the guy that wrote the letter because he is retired. The guy that is gone was replaced by this new guy, Alan, that after you said, somebody told Yostin or yourself, there was no problem. A week later, here comes a letter from Alan, who replaced Ryan, and he says, you people better get this done or you're gonna be in a lot of trouble. Just because the fellow that wrote the letter a year ago didn't follow up because he retired. So he's still thinking about it, I take it. I don't know what his.
Yeah, I'm looking for response. I, I wrote back, I think I.
The story that came out from the report back and said to talk to Yostin and get a name, who did he talk to? Somebody that drives a scraper out here east of town? I mean, he, the highway road people and people in charge of this don't know about any of that. I don't know where the message came from, that this is all foolishness and we don't have to do anything because it's still out there. It just happened by coincidence that this guy that picked up the ball wrote two weeks later. Do you know who was talked to?
No.
Did somebody call Norfolk or somebody that?
She also called someone within the Department of Roads.
I mean, it struck me strange when you wrote your memo that there was no mention of who was talked to and why and what. But it's not so. I mean, that letter is still out there and it needs attention.
And it was clear from the letter, and Bruce is right, it's, it's an issue. It's unfortunate we can't do something with a flashing light to keep it flashing, but a school it's, it's got separate hours. They are specific hours.
And, and note in his letter, this, that he reaffirmed with his backup letter, there's a second thing. It says there should be a change in the speed limit out on the west side of town.
Yeah.
I don't have the record. I don't know if that got done or not. That was a whole year ago. I need to look back through my files. So you could easily enough check the ordinances and see if that speed limit was changed.
So I don't know if that's the forty-five.
They wanted, the thirty-five limit extended another hundred feet. They had looked in the Plainview City Code and said, what we've got on record has an ending of Pilcher and it's supposed to be a hundred feet beyond Pilcher.
Yeah.
Like that makes a huge difference, but they want it right anyway. So we need to look at those two things and get something going on. You have, and Mike has in his report, the air quality issue and grumpy letters and citations from the state about reporting and stuff over here at the generating plant. It all has to do with the generating plant, right?
This is.
Permits and reporting, it's not DEQ sewer or anything, it's all over here.
Bob Baird got thrown into the last grumpy phone call, but it wasn't about this. It was about air emission fee. And the fee, they sort of raised their dander up about that they're gonna put penalties on it. It was supposed to be due on July first. It went out in the claims. Well, and I never looked at it. We could have cut a special check for this, but we're not claiming. So they decided to call Bob and then I went and researched it and yes, you approved it tonight and I called him and told him it was coming tomorrow. Eighteen dollars and nine cents. So I, yeah.
Well, they've dumped it over to somebody in the Attorney General's office who had called a couple of times and I called him back and talked to him. So once the, they decide they can't stand it any longer and they've dumped it over to the Attorney General's office, they want an answer.
I've had some dealings with the Attorney General's office and we could be looking at probably a substantial fine if this goes any further, right?
They, they have the right to sit there and look at the, from the reporting side, their, their argument's valid. I mean, it's, it is what it is. We are a class one operating plant. Although when I tried to get the licensing the last time, and I think it's in the report that you have, that it's one of those inspections that Holton inquired about, you know, going to a class two, which has less reporting, because we're an emergency only plant, and they get back to us. Well, they don't have to get back to us, however, we have to follow and rightfully so the reporting laws and rules and the, if you have a fuel meter that's not calibrated within twelve months, and it's twelve months and one day, you will get a letter of warning or notice of violation if you accumulate this. Bob and I met with the director, Mike Linder, about the C and D. And he spent most of the morning, I think, talking about litter in the fence line. And, you know, the number of letters of warning we got, even though we've got three different fence lines, it wasn't good enough. Hence, which is one of the reasons at that time, Bob Burrell kind of helped us come on to kind of alleviate that because we had no manpower. So, yes, I mean, DEQ is serious and they are serious about everything that we have. Lagoon, air, water, and the DHHS is probably more of water than the sewer, so. So we're working on it, but Bruce, they have never gotten back to me and I take it he's never gotten back to you, this last one?
Last I talked to the guy, he was gonna call us back for a conference call and I gave him a reminder on that question with an email last Thursday or Friday and we have not heard back, so I don't know what he's doing. He, last I talked to him, hadn't even really read the file. I mean, I asked him for a couple, a couple copies of letters that he thought were the most significant issues and he answered me and said, I haven't even read them yet, I'm still studying the file. So he, I think, was gonna go back and talk to them and try to get up to speed, but we need to get probably at this point, some kind of a settlement agreement with them, with whatever terms we can negotiate. They're working on it. And we need to get this reporting system up to snuff.
It is.
Letters go back to two thousand eleven or something like that.
I, if you go back in that warning thing, they've been giving us warnings since nineteen ninety-four. I mean, that's just the way, I mean, it's, it's, it definitely our issue to take care of, but it's kind of like a food inspector that goes to a restaurant. I swear to God, they come and they find whatever they can find that's wrong. They're very picky and very meticulous and they look for anything.
Well, but some of that is that they don't like to go away saying you're perfect, so they will find something that they.
The only problem.
If there was something glaring, they would do the glaring and forget those things.
The only problem is Judy is that they've had it out now and now they want to slap.
I got a question actually in regards to, when was the last time the generators ran, Troy?
I'd have to go back and look on the paper. I couldn't tell you the exact date.
Been a while or no?
I think it's been a while, for the summer.
At least two months.
We talked about it running again, but I know we hadn't because of the Chevy and the transfer. He's been running the transfer station for the last two months.
Troy's not the only one they can bring him on, find him, is he?
Yeah. Am I safe to say that you're the only one that I would probably, Kurt maybe? Would, I mean, could Kurt bring him on? Never mind, Troy's the only.
Not safely, huh?
No, Troy's the only one.
City electrician doesn't have a clue on how to run the city electrical generating plant?
They can.
That's a bad.
They can, but I tell you what, it's no.
We need, we need to work on that for those guys, because if he happens to be on vacation or something, we have a storm, we're pretty full.
Emergency Tim is probably, wouldn't you say Troy, Tim is probably the next, or Kurt?
In ten minutes, I can teach these two girls how to run the gas.
Well, there you go.
Well, if it's a surprise.
Yeah, but what about the guys?
They have the girl already.
Now, remember Kelly, you have Melissa close the switch, you push the button.
Yes, right.
Well, you just walk over and start to key, right?
The thing about the flashback bill can kill people if they turn that on.
Oh, yeah, if they transfer it.
Uh-huh.
Speaking of that, I've been getting a lot of seminar material from OSHA about a huge raft of new clothing and safety gear requirements for electrical generating plants.
Really?
Are you guys hearing anything about this?
I'm not getting the OSHA stuff. Are you trying?
No.
I actually, I actually signed on to a one hour video conference and listened, or audio conference, listened to it on the telephone. Heather listened to part of it, took notes. But those people are dead serious and I could not find any exception in the new OSHA rule for size of plant or municipality or jack. I think if you're a plant, you gotta do this. And I think you're talking about thousands of dollars of flash proof t-shirts and rubber boots and all my lord, a lot of safety equipment.
There, that's one thing key, I mean, you can talk about that a little bit, but North Central Public Power was that they've come up with all the transmission lines and stuff have turned into a real stickler.
You know, yeah.
Bucket trucks and all works.
That actually is a good segue, I mean, really. It's an issue.
Yeah.
Because you're talking, if the changing of the rules are becoming that paramount, I mean, it's just not the same, it's not the same rules.
Training for all this OSHA stuff, if it's truly effective on the municipal level, is huge.
And that's an honestly, let's be honest, another governing body, that they come in, they audit you, no matter how careful you think you are, they will find you. I mean, that's, so you can never be too careful, but they walked in the door now.
Only OSHA could walk in, I don't know, anywhere.
Yeah.
Well, that's all I've got on legal business. I, if you're gonna hit community comments, I have two minutes, or as a citizen, I'll scoot down to the end of the table on the question of weed letters. But that's a separate question and I'll reserve it. If we're too busy, we'll do it another time. Won't take long. Go ahead with your other agenda.
Administrator comments?
Well, I'll make this easy. We'll go down the bullets instead of just listening to me talk. First one is an application for the water security grant. I agree completely on any type of conversations individually we've had. This shouldn't be applied for in front of the council and I would like to see it. I've been going through the GPS with the water system for over a year now, J E O, trying to figure out the best way to get our system mapped and up to date as it should be. And this particular grant is an invite list only to come out and it was dated July second when it came out. Unable to get it on anything except for this meeting, but it's a first come, first served. And so I think there was some urgency to, to speed this up. But the bottom line is, is that the local and, and other rules, state statutes prohibit that, so I'm bringing this for you. If you approve it, I would like to go ahead and apply for this and see if we can get the money to start the mapping process for the water. It's one hundred percent. I mean, there might be some costs associated with it, but it's eleven thousand seven hundred dollar lump sum and that's what we're applying for.
Sounds to me like J E O gets that just to come here for supper.
Absolutely. But on the other hand, they're the only ones capable of doing it, so I mean, they've got, it's a J E O. They put on a seminar, I think, about a year ago and actually Roger sent it back and Joe and I went up to Hardington and went through this. Used for many different things, but I knew I wanted to start with the infrastructure here first because it's a bad need and if we ever want to look. in bad need, and if we ever wanna look at water, it's gonna be one of our first ones. And, you know, eleven thousand dollars to map out for one half of the town, and go do the other half next year for another eleven, you start digging holes, it don't take long to add up dollars, so it would be money well spent to get it mapped, so. That's my plea, so I need a motion if you, if you're okay with it.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for the water.
I'll second it.
All right, motion made, seconded, approve that application, Judy?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Grant?
Aye.
Next thing on this discussion, the NCPPD, we won't make it too long, but I think there's two letters in there that were given to you, and the last was response by Keith, significant, we've been waiting for Keith to get back to us, and I liked his reply, basically, they're willing to work with us in just about any way, or shape, or form, or fashion, which could mean rethinking of our electrical system and possibly putting some of that into NCPPD's hands, but on the other hand, we can still contain and control ownership too, without having, you know, this huge, just giving everything to, to them. Dave, help me out, the, you guys probably, JEO.
That guy, Dave, with glasses.
You know, the guy that showed you everything they're having to do.
Peterson.
Peterson, boy, that's a lot of mine. But Dave Peterson replied to me today too, and I gave him Keith's letter, and his response was great news. So, he's really now gonna go and take the lead, call Keith as well, and set up where we can maybe all talk together. Grant, I know you're involved with that, and I'll, well, I'll have you come in, and I'll probably have Tim and Jake come in as well, too, because, so the electric discussion should continue, and I don't think there's a big, huge rush, we're not gonna fall apart tomorrow, but I think the urgency is to be looking at this down the road in the next one, two, three years, and something's gonna have to, and I think NCPPD is, is a, could be kind of a big part.
They do a lot of different things. Keith called and talked to me one day, and basically, I mean, they've got everything from, they'll come in, turn key, run the system, do all the billing, all the way down to maintenance agreements that they'll come in, do all our emergency maintenance, call Keith. I mean, they've got, they're willing to work with us, 'cause, you know, I'll be honest with you, I think it's six thousand meters, and we're bringing in almost a thousand of them ourselves, so I mean, this is a pretty large area for what they're looking at.
They, I mean.
They want, I mean, because, let's be honest, it's money maker for them, so I mean, that's pretty substantial.
And it could be both ways, like you said, it's not a matter of, it could be a win-win, you have to just basically sculpt the contract as you, I think we need to see fit, I don't have a problem with them all, they've been after me, I think, for some years now, to work out some arrangements and.
The thing that I had was, that I, I thought was nice, was they weren't talking about necessarily just coming in and basically buying us out or anything. I mean, they do profit sharing, but you can go all the way down to like, you can put them on just like a maintenance retainer, that should we have a severe storm come through, you know, like, he, he actually used an example like Dover. And so if you have a major storm come through, and you've got North Central Public Power here, they, they're part of a cooperative of all the fund, or all the power companies around in South Dakota and everything, ice storms, you know, instead of our two bucket trucks running, they're gonna bring in ten bucket trucks from all over the place, and they'll come in and bring back the bucket grids, so, which is nice, don't get me wrong, it's not gonna be free, but, I mean, it has its advantages, so, I think it's worth looking at.
It could be cost effective, depending on the amount of cost, we already know what it's gonna cost for us to redo our whole system. And that's obviously one of the options, we can still redo our whole system, and they didn't say that is not, and that's why it's kinda like from A to Z, you know. That's all I have, you have the two letters, Dave Peterson's gonna probably take the lead now on the next set of conversations, and I'll make sure that either I give it to you or we'll keep, keep that dialogue going.
How much is, I guess I gotta ask the billings, I, what's JEO billing us to be involved with these communications at this point?
Nothing, they will, obviously.
I mean, that's, you know, they were looking at a six million dollar investment for us to upgrade, now they're looking at us maybe offloading some of it, there's not nearly too much revenue to be had, so I think they're, don't be a little hesitant of coming in.
Yeah, I would say that with just about anyone, but, you know, Dave seems to be very sincere about wanting to see, and that's why I was kinda surprised by, you know, his, his letter was great, I mean, he thought that was great for his work, whatever, what he worked, and, you know, there probably is, and, you know, NCPPD does use JEO on a lot of their projects too, I mean, they've got the engineers, the one thing they have, they have engineers in-house, I mean, they use their own engineers quite a bit, so, but towns, different towns have different needs, so. That's all I have on that. Number three, ADA Self-Available Evaluation Review, you should have in your packet, basically, I just need to redo it, because it was from two thousand nine, there's a lot of things that need to be done, but I may bring that back from, kinda like the personnel manual, it may need some input, such as the budget, you know, I need to, for the ADA. The next one I hear is approval of the soil testing for the library. All of you received in your packet all three bids for the soil tests for the, up here in that area, Marvin, JEO, the recommendation, my recommendation, obviously, they're, they're really all about the same, Bruce might have something to chime in, but basically, the cheapest one is GSI, they put a good proposal together, I think it's twenty-eight hundred dollars, that'll come from that library, that extra fund to start, you know, start their work, what we said we were gonna do, so, I don't know if there was no real catches unless you saw something.
No, it's a standard, standard sort of soil test.
And this comes out of the money paid on this fundraiser?
Yeah, you know, it's amazing to me that JEO doesn't think they can build a one-story building on a slab without passing off responsibility for how heavy a dirt is under it to somebody else. You'd think you could manage to just write some plans to build a building on a slab without, a soil test to put up a water tower?
Sure.
But to build a one-story building on a slab, they wanna, want us to cover their rear for them, so that if the foundation cracks, it's not their fault. Oh, well. But that's what they wanna do, and it, you know, it's a businesslike way to proceed, I suppose, but good Lord, if you don't, JEO will squeak, and they won't wanna take responsibility for it, and they have it in their contract, in fact, we don't take responsibility for anything that involves below the surface of the soil, we don't do that.
And you didn't see any significant differences in the contracts?
No, it's a standard contract, these guys do this all the time, they do these soil tests.
Sixteen hundred bucks difference in the highest and the lowest, so I didn't know.
Yeah, I don't think there's any additional problems there.
Official services or something?
I don't, I don't think either one of them is necessary, but, you know, well, they have a cheaper one.
They all, from what I read, kinda said the same thing, that this is what, this is how much it'll cost, but unless we have to do this, and then it's gonna cost more.
Yeah.
So, once again, I mean, JEO and then from my point of view, GSI is the cheapest, they're twenty-eight hundred dollars, so, so I would need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve GSI's lump sum of twenty-eight hundred dollars, second.
All right, motion made, seconded, approve the GSI bid, Judy?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Grant?
Aye.
All right, let's approve. Hiring a part-time clerk.
Um, we had forgotten, Judy and I apologize, you said put it on next month, this was one that kinda got linked here, but I, we talked about it on Friday, I believe, and you see it was added, discussion action on a part-time clerk. More thoughts, I mean, in your process, and kinda what's in your mind, we know that we're still working, but you said bring them back and maybe talk to the girls, I, I, I think they've been doing a wonderful job, I, I can see, you know, the possibility of a part-time clerk helping as needed, I, it's, certainly, there are times that right now it gets very hectic, but it seems like the two of them handle it very, very well, done in the majority, which is, I think, what you wanted to hear, wanted to see anyway, and I can, I'll let, if you want to, I'll let them speak to it, and kinda get their thoughts.
It's definitely really hard to do for, first, probably three weeks in the month, because there is so much that I do that requires my whole attention, which leaves everything to Melissa, which she does a great job of doing, but it's just, I mean, all the phone calls and everything, all the people walking in, paying bills and everything, it's just that having that extra third person, just, you just answer phones, you know, with the public, it is huge, 'cause she's trying to do billing, she's trying to do transfer stuff, she's trying to do all the deposits, and I'm doing all the payroll and all the claims and all the bills and so forth, and it's just, it's that we really miss just that one person to handle just the miscellaneous duties, and that's, you know, in a part-time basis, especially towards the beginning of the month.
But would you guys guess? If you had somebody to work twenty hours a week, what hours would you want them to work?
Oh, I guess, most of the time.
Maybe, maybe it wouldn't be the same on each week, maybe on certain types of month.
Well, most of the time in the office, the busiest is, for me at least, is like the beginning of the month, because I gotta do a lot of the, like, the transfer season billing, but then from like the sixteenth on, like, a week after that is when I'm doing meter readings and printing bills and making sure that they're okay, and, so, so it's just like a couple of weeks out of the month where it's really chaotic in the front part of the office, and same with Kelly with the payroll at the beginning, like the fifteenth and the end of month stuff, and doing end of the month.
People want like a six-hour a day thing, kinda helping to cover with like the noon to like a night of three is something that I think, I would be thinking, and I don't know what she was thinking about, but I don't know how we're gonna quantify that to where you say, well, we need just three months out of, you know, three weeks out of the month of night to three type of thing, so I don't know how we wanna structure, you know, that type of help, is what, I guess, what we're going to, I mean, to try to find somebody to work set hours, I guess we have to come up with something, you know, that's...
You might be surprised at that, you know.
That people are willing to work like that.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, Amy works for Brooke, and she does a lot, a little odd hours and stuff, and she loves it for the fact that they put the kids, you know, so I think there's that, that age group, some of the moms and stuff, that.
Right, and I, but I definitely think, 'cause they can get pretty busy at lunch, when, 'cause she goes eleven thirty, and I go twelve thirty, a lot of times we'll get a rush of people at that time.
Right, everybody's on their lunch hour.
Exactly, so something like that would be also very beneficial for us as well, so. But for the most part, we've been doing pretty good, I mean.
Can you go to lunch?
We have to tell him to go to lunch.
What, 'cause he's snoring on his desk?
No, that's about enough, I mean, and they do, I actually, I, I try to get out of
there if I can, I cover the, at least what, little I can, so if there's two people in the office, but I've been trying to get out of there by one thirty, two o'clock.
That's why you answered the phone the other day, I called down there and you answered the phone.
He does really good.
I didn't know who it was, I thought I had the wrong.
You're just, you're just, I got, I got my support.
You'd be surprised who we put to work at any point in time, Kurt's up there, the cash register, then he's waiting the customers for our receipts.
It is, yeah, in all fairness, let me say this, whatever you guys decide to do, I will tell you that as far as what I'm used to, and that even with the load, it has been, you know, it, it's, it's, right now, it's an incredible load time, there's a lot of things going on, and I'm trying to balance between the grants, between the paving, between the conversations, with just about every, every single department is needing attention right now in, in good and bad, I mean, so it's, and hopefully, they are training and learning well, because I haven't been able to spend a whole lot of time with them, and we're coming up on budget, and I'm...
How's that been going, your, you know, your, your learning curve since Laurie's gone and everything?
Well, I've, I've only had eleven hours so far of instructoring, so I've been doing a lot on my own, which has been okay, I haven't, I haven't messed anything up yet, so, it's certainly, but, you know, she came in and helped me quite a bit with payroll, get that Monday, 'cause it was a large payroll, we had three weeks, and so forth, and she, you know, the payrolls, the month end, those are the types, and, and, you know, the corner ends and types are really the help, the rest of it, we've been able to get by with phone calls and stuff like that, so. Just cause we're a big science group and we want to, but, the stuff like, you know, what needs to go on the agenda, some of those things, I'm not really sure, sometimes Bruce will let me know.
But I, but I tried to help that out, and I called her up, and, well, I had Heather call her up and say, "Take these two things off the agenda, you can't call them this, you gotta call them that." And then thirty minutes later, I decided that was wrong, so about the time she would get that done, I called her back and said, "Put that other one back on the agenda, we can't call it that, we gotta call it this."
Bruce, the other thing I'm gonna tell you...
That was just a test to see if you'd not swear at me over the phone.
Yes, he's been very good to me. No, no, I leaned on you, so I, that's fine, I took, he called me back again, I said, "Okay, I've just made another eight copies of the JEO's, it's long to tell me anything to change."
And I, I gotta, I gotta tell you, Bruce, the next time you call back in thirty minutes like that and said, "That was wrong," I, I, I had a heart attack in front of the office, I said, "Bruce just called you back and told you that was wrong, 'cause I figured it had to be a resolution."
But there, but I, you know, there were two items, the other one needed an ordinance, that's why we split it.
Do we want to advertise for somebody? I, I can't imagine with budget coming up that you don't need the extra help as soon as you can get it.
Yeah, we do, 'cause I'll be in my budget, so we do.
I'm more, more concerned with, you know, making it flexible, so if you do hire someone, kinda limit how many hours it is, and then let them know you'll try it at this and these hours, but they may change to different hours.
I agree, I think that's...
You don't like to hire somebody for this and this and this, and then that's not when you really need them, and I don't think you're probably at that point yet, you know exactly when you want them.
From the standpoint of, you know, a crush of work coming in and trying to get something out, just being protected four hours a day, even if you just said morning, or you just said ten to two, or, you know, make it consistent so somebody can make their schedule.
Right.
If you could just say, "All right, now I have four hours not interrupted that I can do this," that's a godsend.
That is true.
I mean, it wouldn't necessarily have to be six or eight hours every certain day, but just have a block of time that they can't get to you.
Right.
If you can find that, it's hard to find. But easier to hire people, is my point, if you make a consistent package, John.
And always, like, she said, we'd be able to have them be flexible, say, "Have me, I need you to stay six hours a day."
Flexible is lovely, if you can find it, it's hard to find.
Yeah, as long as you're not consistently going to forty, I mean, our manual, I mean, just say if they had to stay a couple of extra hours, I suppose, I, I can look at the budget flexible too, and, you know, make sure that that's got a little bit of flex time, not flex time, but flexible time, plan for four, and have the budget for five or six, and make sure that you know they're gonna use it.
I gotta ask, I guess, on a, on a part-time person, how big of an issue is it for like CPNI for billing, privacy, and stuff like that, I mean, what do you guys, what's the city do for, I mean, I'm sure when you started, you probably had to sign like a non-disclosure agreement or something, or not? I mean, that's, that's getting to be a big deal even for like, CPNI that you...
What are you talking, I'm...
Well, basically, what it is, is, uh, how do I explain it? Anytime a customer, it's Privacy Act, basically, when a customer comes in, you need to, if you don't specifically know what you're supposed to verify, but there's also, it's getting to be more and more of an issue with billing, that if you hire a part-time person, you know, they're, they're leaving with customer information, customer records, that kinda thing, and it's not such a big deal with a full-time employee, but when you start having a part-time employee come and go and kinda, it's, it's a legal thing, I mean, it never used to be a problem, and honestly, it's probably not a problem anyway, but they've really started cracking down on us in the bank, you know?
They being?
The, the, be regular, the regulatory, I would guess, probably at state level, is most of what ours is.
Have you, have you sent out Privacy Act stuff? I don't know that I've seen it from the city, and the bank puts out Privacy Act stuff?
We have posters, Privacy Act posters, I believe we have a couple.
The ones that hang in the break room type of stuff?
It's the standard Privacy Act.
You know I'm talking about that.
But the stuff to customers is the subject question, and that's, you know, I think you're supposed to send out a letter once a year stating what's your Privacy Act policies.
I, I didn't know if that was an issue when you started hiring part-time people as opposed to full-time or not, especially if they're gonna be doing the billing and that kinda thing.
It hasn't been, but now you put a bug in my brain, and now you probably, it's true, I mean, it's, I am very sensitive, if Privacy Act things is, is very, very sensitive, such as public information, and I guess for, you know, Brooke and I, there's both, I mean, we have to have so much accessible and so much not, so, we haven't had a problem in all the part-time.
That's one of those things to think about.
So, direction, do you want to...
You think you could hold out for one more month? I would like, I'd like to get you, I don't want this on, but I would like to get you weaned off Lori a little bit more, so you could start seeing how your schedule is gonna work, and where, like they were talking, is what hours of the day, as you start to develop your, basically, your pattern on where you're gonna be, when you would like to have them there, I mean, we know where the lunch hour, clearly.
Yeah, I, I think I pretty much have an idea of what my schedule's like, 'cause I know what my busy times are, and I, I really am worried, you know, weaning myself off, you know, with that whole thing, but I definitely know, especially with her schedule too, that it's just the customer contact that first two weeks, and all the phone calls, it's just amazing, and it's really hard to get, and that's really crucial time for us as and all the phone calls, it's just amazing, and it's really hard to get, and that's really crucial time for us as well, so.
The biggest problem I see, honestly, isn't so much that, it's the fact that, honestly, with only two of you up there, you can't be gone during the day, and she can't be gone, that in the summertime, if somebody go to day-to-day hours, it's like, you can't.
That's, yeah, that's another big issue.
You can just do what I do.
Just close the doors?
Put a sign on a chair that says, I'm out for thirty minutes, sit down, shut up, and write your note on this piece of paper.
And come back the next day.
I didn't see that.
Depends on how long I'm gonna be gone.
Unfortunately, you're billing the guy.
It's a small town, you don't have to lock shit up.
You're billing the guy the whole time he sits there.
Video picks, video picks him up, the clock starts.
Would you have any problems if I started advertising?
Could your personnel committee get in and go visit a couple of times and help with this advertising and do it that way?
Yeah, we have a committee set up.
Who is it, you and Judy?
Uh, Joe and Judy.
Or was it Jason and Judy?
No, it was Joe.
If you don't wanna, if you don't wanna spend.
The Personnel Manual was, was, um, Jason.
Personnel Manual, separate.
Well, you sat in on the interviews.
What?
Didn't you sit in on the interviews?
Yeah, I did.
Judy and Bob.
Oh, okay.
But there's a personnel committee, isn't there, Mike? I mean, we never, I didn't, I mean, every year you used to have, there's committees for every little topic, and there's an official committee. Anyway, my point being, you could take a motion tonight to authorize ex-committee to work with Mike and get up an ad, you'd still have to accept it at the next meeting perhaps, but if you don't look out and you wait till next month to start advertising, it's gonna be Thanksgiving before you get something done.
Thank you.
Yeah. Make a motion of that, if you, two of you willing to, who else? Bob worked on it last time, I guess, would you be willing to do that again, Bob?
Yeah, I can do that.
Go through with Mike and work on it.
Yeah.
Make a motion of that.
I'll second it.
Alright, motion made, seconded, Judy.
Alright.
Lori.
Hi.
Grant.
Hi.
Okay, the, uh, next item on here, um, Lori actually straightened me out once again, but, uh, she brought to my attention, changing council meetings is not something that you wanna do without discussion action. Uh, you don't have to, and I'm gonna go ahead and tell you what my thoughts are. August regular council meeting falls on the twelfth. I will be in Norway at that time. Does not mean you can't have the meeting, for what I would suggest, because of the budget, and the budget is crucial, that either you lighten the load on August twelfth as much as you can, and go through the claims, and you do the regular business, uh, cause otherwise you'd have to wait until nineteen, and that gets a little long for claims. So, uh, there's a couple of different options, you can, you can try a little bit out if you wish, and that would be fine with me the first week of August. That tends to be a little quick for claims, we don't always get them in. Uh, you know, that second Tuesday is, is optimal, it really is, and most months it's perfect.
How long are you going?
I'm just going Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, I'll be back on Thursday.
August eleventh through fourteenth.
If you do decide to continue that, then I would ask you to maybe look at your calendar. The one thing we're gonna wanna do is, so, and I know how this goes, because nobody likes to be at the budget workshops. Regardless, we probably need at least two, if not three. Two is, is the minimum, and I think we try to do two each, if third one sometimes comes necessary, if there's some, um, issues or things that just aren't coming together as well as they should, so. You can, so you got two choices, and I'll, I'll kinda let you guys figure out, you know, what you think.
Could we have a special meeting earlier?
Mm-hmm.
And then for the budget, and then have the re- and try to take care of as much as we can.
Yes.
That we don't wanna do at the, at the regular meeting, and then try to make that regular meeting really short, and just do claims, and, and then have another budget meeting later.
Yeah, I, you know, if you want to even go so far as to make the twelfth a, a meeting of, items always get added to an agenda, but if you wanna limit the agenda, and you tell the clerk, direction, and know, you know, the, this is a meeting for just claims and that, you certainly can, otherwise you might find it starting to drift with more and more and more items, so. Yeah, that would work for me, and then I'm still gonna probably would like to see a meeting at the end of August. September comes, and our, our budgets are due like the twentieth, you know, in that range, I haven't gotten the exact. But we really can't start and do the workshops until August, which, cause I'm gonna be saying, well, why do we wait till then? But, but I don't get valuations from the county, everything comes together quick and fast. I just got the highway allocation today, yesterday? Today, so I mean, they, right now is when the time the budgets start coming in, and I start getting the figures that actually make sense. So, uh, so at least if you're gonna do that, and if you're looking at maybe three meetings in the month of August.
And the first week is shot, cause that's Sturgis, and everybody will be gone.
The first one, if you, if you do have anything missing, anyone, it would have to be a special workshop, and it would be put in there. It would be just a lot of worksheets, you'd get to start filling them out, I've got all your vehicle, all those things, those, those sheets that we worked on, I've got those, and I'm starting to work on what we need, and.
Rotation.
More of a needs list, it'll be the same way with the staff, kinda go with the staff and see what the needs are and bring back.
Would you be ready to do that on the fifth?
Of August, yes.
That's the first Tuesday?
Yeah.
Would that work for, not work, you know, we don't have to do it on Tuesday that week, then not a problem with me.
Not a particular one, like say, Bruce, sure, I can, I can always email you, it's just the budget stuff, so.
Whatever.
We can skip.
I, I actually, I won't have gone on the fourth for whatever it's worth, but I, this budget meeting, I would normally attend anyway.
I, I, I know.
In your special meetings, you can set them, you know, if you're gonna change your regular meeting, you gotta get on the book here with a motion.
I, I think we could just have the regular meeting on the twelfth, as we normally do, that's my thought. And just say that.
Keep it clean.
Uh, you know, set a limited agenda, and say, anything else that comes up that isn't emergency, that we will put it on our special meeting, that we're gonna have afterwards. So if we have something we have to take care of, you get back.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'll.
We carry it over till then.
Yeah, the last one in August will probably be the heavy workshop, and the one that everyone hates, and I'll try to bring cookies and food and everything else, because we're gonna be here for four or five hours. Everybody loves budget meetings.
Do you ever know if you're ready to make that kind of as a motion?
Uh, I don't know, Cora, like Bruce is right though, you really don't need to do anything, if, unless you wanna make a special meeting right now, just determine the date you can, but otherwise we can, I can send it out and do that and post it. Uh, if you're gonna keep the regular meeting the same, do you understand it, Bruce?
I think we should, just for, in ways that never.
Well, if you don't change the regular meeting, I mean, the special meeting, you can set, I'm sure, notice, sure, we'll do it.
Got it.
And make a record.
Okay.
Whatever.
The special meeting later in the month, do we have a date you wanna?
Register a date, um.
If we can try to, try to set something up, so we can get your list.
So, regular meeting is still the twelfth?
Yep, we have two more Tuesdays.
Nineteen forty-six.
Does Joe have, I know, we've tried to change meetings, and he, Tuesday nights?
You're, um.
Yes, this is good, but you don't, you don't have a Pierce County thing on Tuesday nights, or?
Maybe, I mean, if, if, this would take precedence over that.
Might be a reason to hold off on your special meeting and try and talk with Joe. He'll squeak pretty hard if you miss him on the regular meeting.
Yeah, I know, we should have the fifth, if you wanna put the fifth in stone and leave it.
Okay, alright.
And then we'll, we'll.
At the fifth, we can try to post that up the other day.
Okay.
What time?
A little earlier, would be possible to go like right at five o'clock on that one, just to get in your calendar.
You would make my day. I don't know, that's when I start drinking.
Does that work for you, Judy, like a five o'clock at the beginning?
And the late month special meeting, you're not gonna set it for now, you'll set it later.
I have nothing more on mine.
Mr. Community Member. Do you have any community notice, or any other community events to discuss here? Here, I'll turn this over for you.
Well, I do, but I'll defer, you're probably getting tired, it's gonna count a lot.
Right. Here's my problem, I got this weed letter from the city, and I have some weeds behind my storage building, and they're over twelve inches tall, and I don't object to getting a weed letter, but I object to being targeted over and above most of the community. On this map are yellow marks where all the city weed letters went, and a green mark where I am, and the red marks circled with ink are the people that didn't get weed letters. Look at the map and kinda get a picture in your mind, and then I'll hand these pictures down for you. The yellow marks are the, the yellow marks are the city weed letters that went out. Green is my storage building, sitting over here behind the office, and the red circles are where I'm gonna show you these pictures. These are the pictures of my storage building as they existed a week after I got my weed letter. This has not been mowed. I had mowed it once already, and this is what it looked like a week after I got the weed letter. And there's the weeds there, sure, there are, and I don't object to getting a weed letter, but I object to having a sharp stick mowed in my eye every summer. That's the map. Now, this is other downtown properties, this is some of the stuff right here downtown that were circled in red. No weed letter on any of these properties, you may recognize some of them. No weed letter, no weed letter, no weed letter.
I also went around town looking.
These are all the downtown properties.
Yeah, and the downtown properties, I mean.
And my storage building is mowed, except back by the alley, where there, where there are some weeds that need attention. It's been wet muddy, it's been busy, I've been gone a lot. Three-fourths of the weeds behind my storage building are on the neighbor's property. The neighbor also didn't get a weed letter. The neighbor hires somebody to mow his grass, but the guy won't mow, a bad spot, he leaves that for me. This is the block out along the highway, Mr. Ashop's block, he actually wasn't here long enough to participate. Well, is it still Ashop's, the trailer park block?
Yeah.
This is the block out along the highway, right on Highway twenty, in Plainview. I mean, you have to go look at it to get behind my storage building and see a weed. I mowed out in front, that's along the highway. The rest of these, these are just some other selected spots around town, including a half a dozen of the city properties just because. But I wouldn't expect the city properties to get weed letters.
Forest, that's, that's like gated park.
Yeah, I expressed, Mr. Graff, he eats the most weeds a couple of times, that's not my ability to work.
Old west of Danforth House, a couple blocks.
The urs took it. The urs took it.
None of these other pictures I'm showing you got weed letters. Now, if we're gonna do this, let's be fair about it. And I don't know what the process is, and I don't know what the hand Mike wants to have on it, but I do get annoyed. I mow that building three times or four times every year, I don't need a weed letter to tell me to mow it, but I get the sharp stick in my eye every summer, and then stuff like this goes on all over town. Yeah, they are kinda pretty.
The thistles?
A bit pretty, thistles.
Yeah. So I guess I'm asking the council to consider having the administrator review the process that puts out these weed letters, and either get them fair-minded and well-done, or quit. That's all I got.
Save your shit.
It's the west part of town.
There are two or three of those that I didn't have a street address on, because they're up in the gravel district, up by Dennis Fosberg. You know, I would, I would get my weeds mowed if I didn't take so much time scooping the city snow off the park, and cleaning up the park with my heavy equipment early in the spring, but I didn't have time to mow, because I was busy doing those things. Well, this is a no-action item, unless you're willing to suggest to Mike that perhaps he can review the process, and either be fair about this or not. There are six or eight properties in downtown Plainview, right on Main Street, that are worse than mine, and I got the only weed letter. I find that to be offensive.
We probably do need to do something about, I don't know what you wanna do about this, uh, pinnacle building up here. Uh, if you tell the former owner about it, he just squawks and says it's, uh, not his, you know, if you want, I mean, we can charge it back to the IRS or whatever, and the city can go in and do it. Are they doing anything with it, is it forcing it?
Finding out the real owner instead of them?
Still won't get, I mean, still won't get that, and as far as the, uh, the process, code is pretty clear, you guys probably should, this goes long before noon, and somewhere along the way between the time, Bruce has a better history than I do, but somewhere along between the time of no administrator to some administrator to partial administrator to whatever, someone who is authorized for the police. The code says city administrator, or duly authorized.
And there's no reason that one of the kids mowing the park couldn't drive around town with a camera and bring you twenty pictures, and then you could send out the weed law.
Well, but let's be honest, we're talking about something that's not gonna be enforced, just like the thirty-some cars I got.
I know.
I mean, how many tickets a week, but I, I know where you're going, but my point, back to that again, of, yes, you're being picked up, clearly you can see it. You had tall weeds, but some of them are.
That's my only objection.
But.
It's being, it's being targeted, is my objection, and I believe it, I know who that is, but I asked the city who authorized this and wrote it down, and I didn't get an answer. So I'm not making any personal attacks. It may be the police, it may be somebody else, it may be God, I don't know who.
But Bruce is sure, regardless, and I don't sit there and stick anyone, there's only two people that have the authority to send out a weed letter. Two people, and I did not send yours out, and we'll leave that alone at that. I mean, when I sent out a weed letter, basically, I go ahead, here's how I sent out a weed letter, Melissa.
I got blond shoulders.
Sorry, Bruce. When I sent out a weed letter, as I told Bruce, and, and yes, there's gonna have to be some more thought process, the consistency of it, but when I sent out a weed letter, usually what I have is someone that calls in a neighborly complaint, and I'll go up with the car and look at it, and a couple of these were clearly beyond the twelve inches, so.
And that's, and that's what they're for, they're for lawns that have gotten out of control. There's the twelve weeds behind Subway, they're just as bad as my twelve weeds, but who cares?
But, unless you get, well, back to my original point of, that would be fine, if you didn't mow them, I expect you'd be sent a, a bill or mowed, and I would expect everybody else to be.
Sure.
But, that's where it falls a little short.
But where there's six or eight as bad or worse all around me, and I get a weed letter right in the middle of the pile, that's crap.
That's kind of a Florida issue, and I didn't get one.
Yours not over there?
I keep mine in the binder, I hired the bonnet kid already, so mine's taken care of. Oh, shoot, because I was gonna say.
Well, I can't hire anybody to mow mine, because it's steep, and it's clay, and it's mud.
It's four foot tall.
And it's four foot of drop, you can't run a riding mower on it. So you can't hire anybody to mow that, I have to drag something up and down the little slope. That's why the guy that owns the house next to me pays somebody to mow that lawn, to his credit.
Doesn't want.
But the guy that mows the lawn doesn't mow all those weeds, he leaves them for me to mow, because it's so damned hard, and when I mow, I mow them, but I'm only gonna mow when I choose to mow them. Unless the city wants to go mow them and send me a bill, but then they damn well better mow all those other people. Unless the city wants to go mow them and send me a bill, but then they damn well better mow all those other people.
Can we ask that you tell Bruce that before he sends the letter, it goes through you?
I'll take care of it.
And can you also let him know what this discussion was about and let him know that we want equal enforcement? And that's the problem with not enforcing our ordinances?
There's two things that I answer that. Yes. And the other one's, do I have to? Yes. Yes.
It's not much of an action item. And it's a damn shame it has to come here. But it's also a damn shame, the way the system works, that it happens that way.
Well, it's always been a stickler for me. I mean, it's no different than the vacant house and how one of them can be picked out.
Because I sit here month after month and say, "For God's sakes, enforce the law." When I have a four-inch weed, I get a weed letter.
Losses.
I know. It's terrible. And I'm so ashamed. But I'm going to save up my time and not scoop the law in the park and not work in the park and not clean out the picnic shelters. So, next summer, I'll have time to mow.
We got a couple. Later, kind of easy. They don't require any discussion necessarily. Not on the mowing side, but God bless him, Dwayne Dean is gradually turning his lot out there into a junkyard. Three pickups now that don't run and don't move and a tractor and a tr, and a huge shed.
Where is this?
On his property out here at East End.
On the corner.
On the south end of East End. I drive by it every day and every day it gets a little worse. He sends somebody out to mow it. That's fine. I mean, it's great. And he did a little work on the house. Nobody lives there, but fine. But he now has like two or three cars parked there, trucks parked there, and his scrummy old tractor. And there was a fridge laying outside for about eight months. And just a bunch of junk. Uh, he's just gradually doing what he did out in the country and just turned it into a junkyard. And right at the entrance to town, that looks kind of bad. The, the painting guy at least moved his all behind the Kwanzaa now, so you can't really see. It's all the same crap. It's all still sitting there, but at least it's behind the Kwanzaa and he put up a fence or something. I was, I just ended one of those development things. I happened to be at the City of Wakefield meeting the other day for some other business. And the city paid a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to renovate and make some lots available for housing, which they have now sold all of at fifteen thousand dollars in turn of profit. And so, um, something to consider if possible. Sometimes when you lay out the money, it doesn't all have to be just down the drain. It can be returned in profit somehow. And then they reinvested all that money in doing some electrical work. And they did all the utilities up to the lots. That's why it costs so much. But I think they had, I don't know, eighteen lots or something that they sold in Wakefield. Those are all brand new houses all the way around their whole town. So, just something to think about. Uh, I had to run out at the housing hearing portion for an emergency. But I mentioned to Mike, uh, there were some, the only way, well, not the only way. The second to only way that got actually noticed to people was, I believe Lee must have hung up her own notices in Casey's and the grocery store. And I think there was one at the post office perhaps. The city might have gotten one.
Roadrunner.
Okay. Those are not the written-down legal posting places for official meetings of the city. The notice was unsigned. Uh, it was obviously done on behalf of the city, which I don't know that you should be comfortable allowing to have happen. And if I would have been here for the hearing, I would have asked that it be canceled because I think it was totally illegal. And the reason I say that is because the last time when we applied for this grant, I said the same thing. And Lee screamed at me in my office for a half an hour about how she didn't know the rules and it's not fair and we need to apply for this now. And it'll never, ever, ever happen again. And then it happened again. The three legal posting places that the city has to determine every single year and put the things up every year are the post office, the news office, and the city office. If you want to change those, do that. But I would suggest that random people not be able to publish notices for the city. When I called Mike, Mike said, "Good God, put it in the paper, take care of it. It's fine." That also runs into, was that enough time? I don't know what the time limit is on CDBG grants. I believe it to be ten days, but we talked about that a month ago too. I would not recommend that anymore. And I don't really feel bad about missing the, having Lee yell at me in discussion again. But I don't think this public hearing was right. And I don't think it was done in the right way. And I don't think it shouldn't happen. I, it's just the way it is. I, they were posted in the wrong places. The city had next to no knowledge about them being posted on their behalf. And it wasn't signed. And it wasn't anything. And I, I disagree with the way that happened. I got, I don't know if you have some library people here. This is not more of a complaint, but just kind of a wondering thing, sort of. Under new business in the library's minutes this time, and I was watching this a little bit because I just like to watch this. They said, Kelly said they were going to make a script for their presenters, which is great. And then they're going to do some work at the Decarby Q, which I guess they can. Nobody really asked, but whatever. With a literacy campaign with bottled water and bookmarks handed out at the Decarby Q. The only reason I bring it up is because Mike teased me the other day about putting the photocopies for the petition on the city's ticket. Because of when the sales tax went, got ran through, I brought up the, the, uh, the government agency that does the taxing, promoting the passage of a sales tax, blah, blah. So, he joked with me about that. And that's long gone and over and done. And it's no big deal. But a literacy campaign, I mean, you have to be very careful with that. And I have told myself I would never make a bigger deal of it than bringing it to these meetings, but I'd really like to see everybody make sure they're really, really, really careful. Handing out water and bookmarks, most of the, most, almost, all the stuff, and I, here, I'm shooting myself in the foot because I help the library out with some of their printing. And I'm all for the library. It's great. But you really want to be careful, but it's because if somebody doesn't like this, this is what they go after. They go after the public notices stuff. They go after the rules and regulations being followed stuff. And if you show that you have spent money to help this get passed, you're going to have a problem with a lot of people. And so, I don't know. I mean, it says fundraising committee and board members. It doesn't actually even say foundation in this case. Foundation had done it in the past. They printed up a bunch of things and they came to the, uh, alumni thing, which is great. They, they asked, it was great. And they're doing everything they can. And I understand that. But you really want to be careful with this. And I'm not going to say bottled water is lobbying people to pass the bond or any of that kind of stuff. But I've mentioned it a couple of times and it continues to progress. And I don't know what the bookmarks are going to say. And it's none of my business. I don't care. But you, you cannot, the, the taxing agency cannot spend money promoting the passage. I mean, even if they walk around in the park and try to convince people that it's a good idea, it counts. I, I, I don't think you want to get into that stuff. So, I'm, I'm not thinking they're purposely doing anything wrong on purpose because they want to do it so badly. But a lot of times around here and in other towns too, I see a lot of times, people just, they, they don't pay attention. They don't know the rules.